Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the March 28th, 2019 formal session of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners. Again, as usual, before we get started and go to our flag salute, if you do have a cellphone, we ask that you silence your cellphone. If you have to send or receive texts or making calls, for the courtesy of others, that you go in the hallway and do that, please. So that being said, time for, we'll go ahead and move to the flag salute. And Ken, can I get you to lead the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, that'll take us to our public comment period, and this is a period we normally reserve for public comment on any topic that's one, not another agenda item, a causiduitious land use matter, or a topic scheduled for a current or public hearing. Unless extended or restricted by the Chair, the majority of the Board, public comment, I will limit the public comment as I see necessary, but I don't think we'll have to do that today, so we'll move right on. And the first one I have is from Barry Lilly. So Barry, you want to come on forward, please? State your name and address for the record.
Get seated here. My name is Barry Lilly. I live at 629 Northwest Jason Court here in McMinnville. Okay, I know you're going to find this hard to believe, but I'm working on a new cause. The bottom line is that I am asking that you fully fund budgets for mental health programs. As you ask yourselves what a program might cost if you approve it, also ask yourself what a program might cost if you don't approve it. A growing issue in the mental health issue is suicide awareness prevention. In Oregon, there are just over 800 suicides a year. As unacceptable as that statistic is, be aware that for every completion, there are about 25 attempts. Suicide is the number two cause of death in Oregon for people aged 15 to 34, and over 50% of suicides are the result of firearms. The American Foundation for Suicide Prevention is a grassroots organization to promote awareness, legislation. One bill they are promoting, and this might seem kind of simple, but they want to establish a three-digit number for the national hotline. Currently, that number is 1-800-273-8255. Try remembering that if you're in a moment of crisis. There is one paid staffer for all of Oregon and Idaho. I have met with him, and he's going to help me with a plan so I can accurately carry this message to the public. I am deeply committed and have personal reasons to this cause, and I'm asking for your support. This Sunday, March 31st, will mark the second anniversary of my attempt. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you, Barry, very much. Okay, the next one we have is Stan Primzic. So Commissioner, where are you? Come on forward.
Stan Primzic, 493 Pemberly Loop in McMinnville, Oregon. I'm here today to speak to a very disappointing decision made by this commission to do away with the invocation prior to our public meetings. I think you can tell just by the speaker who was here just ahead of me, we have some significant issues. And I'm not going to say that we don't have an intelligent Board of Commissioners, but even the most intelligent person needs all the help they can get, and I don't think asking the Lord to be present in our meetings is a slap in the face to anyone. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, Stan. Okay, for general comments, I do not have any other cards for general comments. I do have some that are for some agenda items, so we'll get to those. Commissioners, this is time we take a look at our consent agenda. Currently, on our consent agenda, we have the approval of a contract employment agreement between the Yamhill County Planning Department and Kathryn Plank for Electrical and Building Inspection Services at the rate of $35 an hour, and that's retroactive to March 4th of 2019 through July 1, 2020, with automatic renewal for succeeding fiscal years. Then we have approval of Amendment Number Two to an agreement between Yamhill County Health and Human Services and Jeff and Leona Reed, which is Board Order 17145, effective April 1st, 2019, at the rate not to exceed $525 per month per bedroom. And then the last thing in our committee, we have approval of the reappointment of Tim Durfelt, Maria Vista, and Bill Palato to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, each to serve a four-year term expiring March 28th, 2023. So Commissioners, all entertain a motion if we don't want to pull anything off the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I will so move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Sterrett that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show that Commissioner Sterrett, Commissioner Kula, Commissioner Olson all voted unanimously to approve the consent agenda. That takes us to old business. We do not have any old business on our agenda day, and that takes us into other business, and those are add-on and non-consent agenda items. The first one we have is consideration of approval of the Public Works 2019 Maintenance Improvement Plan, or MIP, plan road list with alternates based in the amount of $1,385,885. So Commissioner Kula.
Yes, I pulled up the consent, because I wanted to hear a little bit more about the priorities.
There's no microphone or anything.
You can't hear me?
No.
Okay.
Pull a little closer there.
I can pull it a little closer. I try to talk to them when I'm talking to them, so you got it? Okay. Yeah, thank you, Susan, I think, for that question. I wanted to have a little bit more clarity about the prioritization of roads. And I talked with Public Works yesterday about that, and I feel comfortable with the priority scores, as it were. But if either of you Commissioners also want to, there are folks here you can answer.
No, I'm fine.
I'm fine with that, too.
Hey, I guess you came just, it was nice to see both of you.
Would you like to say something?
I want to say thank you for inviting us and thank you for letting us leave.
Okay. Oh, that's the part.
And thanks for putting up one of my questions yesterday, right?
So therefore, Commissioner Kula, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Item D1, the consideration approval of the Public Works 2019 MIP list.
Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Sterrett, Commissioner Kula, and Commissioner Olson voted to approve the Public Works 2019 Maintenance Improvement Project road list with alternates, total base amount $1,385,885. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That will take us to our second item today, and we do have one speaker, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Sterrett. This is for consideration of adopting a resolution recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Mary?
Yes, well, I think that we have a premier guest here to address that, the Executive Director of Juliet's House, Russell Mark.
Welcome, Mark.
Nice to have you here.
Thank you, Commissioners, so much for the invitation to be here. My name is Russell Mark. I'm the Chief Executive for Juliet's House. Thank you also for considering this proclamation of April being National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Juliet's House works in collaboration with numerous organizations throughout Yamhill County and in Polk County and across the state to both intervene in child abuse as well as try to prevent it, and also to, now, we're proud to say that we provide direct treatment with our therapists that just came on board a few months ago. In this state, last year, we had over 11,000 cases of confirmed child abuse and neglect across the state. It is a significant issue because of the major connections between child abuse, that which is not intervened in, and social issues such as homelessness, dropout rates, substance abuse, homelessness, and a plethora of chronic health illnesses that children and adults face when child abuse is not directly dealt with. The point of this month, the hope of this month, is that by lifting this up in a public dialogue, it empowers people to understand each one of us can play a role in preventing child abuse. I deeply appreciate the steps that this commission has taken, and our various communities across the county are lifting up that we all play a role, that there's much more to be done, and that we can do. Very shortly, you'll be seeing blue ribbons going up and pinwheel gardens going up, giant billboard over on Baker and Adam Street, all pointing in this direction. So thank you very, very much for this work that you do and for the work of all of the colleague organizations that we work with in this community.
Okay, Russell, if you'll just sit right there, I'm going to have Commissioner Sterrett read the resolution. Mary?
Thank you, and thank you for the work you do. It's not easy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So as a matter of protocol, we're required to read the resolution, any resolution that we pass as a board. So I'll start with this. This is in the matter of a resolution recognizing April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. This is Resolution 19-03-28-1. Whereas child abuse is considered to be one of our nation's most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between abuse and neglect in a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders in children, whereas it is estimated that one in four children will suffer significant abuse before the age of 18, and annually, over 80,000 Oregonian children are reported to the Department of Human Services as having been abused and neglected, with over 10,000 child abuse victims confirmed in 2018 alone. And whereas the physical, emotional, and financial impact of abuse and neglect falls most heavily on children of all ages and abilities who come from economic, racial, and social backgrounds, and these crimes affect many more family members, friends, neighbors, coworkers. And whereas a trauma-informed response to victims promotes healing and fosters strength in survivors, and whereas child victims who feel understood and supported are most likely to disclose their victimization, seek services to find healing, and participate in the justice process, and whereas providing victims and their families with knowledge of their rights and available services further strengthens their ability to recover by restoring a sense of self-empowerment, and whereas Yamhill County is dedicated to strengthening child abuse survivors and their non-offending families in the aftermath of a crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors to prevent abuse and neglect. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Board, on behalf of the citizens of Yamhill County, hereby recognizes the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, done this 28th day of March 2019. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
I feel like we should clap at that one. We need a motion.
Need a motion.
Yes. So that being said, we need a motion. Mary, do you want to make the motion that we approve this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I make a motion that we approve, we adopt the resolution recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the Board of Commissioners of Yamhill County have unanimously approved the resolution recognizing April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, with Commissioner Sterrett, Commissioner Kula, and Commissioner Olson all voting in the affirmative. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
Okay, that will then move us from our other business, that will go ahead and move us into our public hearing. The first thing we do is we have a public hearing, and this is on Doc at G0118, and it's consideration of the remand of Ordinance 904, and that's relating to the Yamhill West Sider Trail, and this will be continued from March 7th of 2019. And we will not be taking any additional testimony, so at this time, I will reopen the public hearing at the time of Item Number 13, Staff Recommendation. So Christian?
It's actually, yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to note, I do appreciate and want to thank the farmers for providing detailed testimony on their concerns for the proposed establishment of this transportation corridor. We have tried very hard to listen to the testimony and address their concerns, and will continue to do so. And I do want to emphasize that this is a transportation corridor. It was identified as such in 2012 when it was placed in the Transportation System Plan. And if you look at this present application, we're talking about developing 2.8 miles of rail corridor utilized as a trail between the cities of Yamhill and Carlton, cities that, I should note, share a combined school district and have students commuting daily between the two cities. This would provide an additional option for them to travel to school. The overriding concern seems to be that Portland and the problems of the metro area will all move down to these communities with this trail, and frankly, I don't see that as a likely issue with this segment of the transportation corridor. There are so many trail and recreational opportunities to a biker or hiker in the Portland metro area. For example, if I lived in Oregon City, would I likely drive a 70-plus mile round trip to go on a 2.8 mile of the Yamhills Trail, or would I take the same trip to go the 21 miles of the Banks-Fernonia Trail? In addition, this is not a new idea that has never been tried. If it was, I'd be reluctant to support it. It's an idea that has been tried and one that has been successful in many parts of the state, including counties adjacent to ours that have very similar, if not exactly the same, land use issues, yet have developed far less infrastructure to support their trails than what Yamhill County has promised to do. Based on the testimony and evidence in the record, the potential impacts of farm uses identified can be minimized through appropriate conditions, design, and management of the facility. Based on the findings, this facility meets the conditional use criteria and would not significantly change or increase the costs of accepted farm or forest practices on adjacent lands. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the application with the eight conditions in the findings and with one additional condition, which states, "This approval shall expire two years following the date of final approval unless the use has been initiated. An extension may be requested provided the request is submitted prior to the expiration of this approval." I want to note that we interpret final approval as the date when all appeals have been exhausted, and that's been our practice throughout the years. Now, having said all this, I want to note that I am by no means ignoring or discounting the testimony of the farming community. Based on the previous hearing, we obviously have a lot of work to do to demonstrate that this can be a successful project. That means a lot of work on the part of the staff and decision-makers, from the Board to the city councils of Carlton and Yamhill. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you, Ken. Christian, do you want to tell the Commission what we should be doing here?
The next step is for you to close the hearing and deliberate.
Okay. That being said, public hearing's closed, and now we'll go into deliberations on the remand of Ordinance 904 related to the Yamhill West Sider Trail. So let's, Casey, let's start with you for deliberations, unless we want to vote and then do our deliberations.
Yeah. You wouldn't vote before doing deliberations?
Okay.
We would make a motion.
Yeah.
But you can also have a discussion and then make a motion.
Okay. So let's have our discussion before we make a motion, if that's all right with you, Commissioners.
Go ahead.
Mary, do you want to say anything?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Well, then, I would make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit.
Now, we-
Did everybody hear that?
No.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit.
Okay, we have a motion. Any more discussion? Mary?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Since the beginning, my concerns have been well documented about this. Recently, just found out that the FDA is now going to be actually, to ensure food compliance, going to be visiting farms, going to be showing up on people's farms to ensure food safety, to implement the Food Safety Modernization Act. So the FDA is going to be going around making sure that everybody is in compliance. I think this will make it more difficult for people to have that compliance, obviously, if there are people that are within close proximity to their farms. We have stricter OSHA laws, and then, you know, just in reference to Mr. Friday's comments, with all due respect, the problem is not what could happen, the problem is already here. All you have to do is check with our sheriff's office, check with our code enforcement officer, and check with what's going on in rural Yamhill County with people who are unlawful tenants in rural properties, just as an example of what has been going on. I'm a board member on YCAP, and every month when I go to board meetings, I come out to what is getting to be an increasingly dangerous situation on Dustin Court with people who are camping there. And the other day, there were 11 police cars in the middle of the day with a violent situation, and more and more crime going out there with people who've made a decision to live there kind of off the grid. So this isn't a problem that is, it's hypothetical, it exists, and now what we're going to do is consign our farmers to that, and that is the legacy of this vote. So I am vehemently opposed to it, and I apologize to our farmers who have made this, your culture has made the backbone of this county, and now we are basically turning around and saying that it's more important to put a bike trail through your farm and your livelihood than it is to protect you and the agricultural and cultural investment you've made in this community, and I think it's disturbing, and I think it's disgraceful.
Okay, you know, I agree with everything Commissioner Sterrett had, but I have problem tying in the problem that's going on in Dustin Court and Marsh Lane, and everybody talks about the Spring Water Trail, an urbanized trail, and urbanized services. I just don't see that. Of all the trails I've been in the state of Oregon that are outside an urbanized area, you don't see that because there's no services. A lot of the homeless people, they want the services, they want to be able to get to places, and I don't see that going on with this trail. I also realize, though, that we're very, in the short, what I would say relatively short time we've done this process, there will be a lot more legal challenges to come, whether it have to do with, anything to do with the trail, and I believe in letting the legal system do its work. I mean, I put up with this for 25 years, or went through this for 25 years with the Newberg-Dundee bypass, have volumes of information, same kind of issue, but I do believe that this is good for the economy of Yamhill County. Is there a lot of work to do? There certainly is. So I believe that I will go, and we can call for the vote, so.
I'd like to-
Go ahead, Casey. Okay. Yeah, you can add more discussion.
And I'm going to talk to the Commissioners here, but I'm also going to talk to you all because there's a lot of farmers out there, and I do want to recognize that you all also know that I'm a farmer. Hi, BJ. Excuse me? This process is not about whether there is a significant increase in the cost of farming practices or a significant change in farming practices. This is about whether during the conditional use permit process, we can adopt conditions that mitigate those to being less than significant. And both the applicant and the organized opposition have agreed that significant in this context is weighty and notable, and I believe that with the conditions that have been applied or that are proposed, that we can actually do that. And this isn't also a matter of, the issue was brought up of constitutional protection of individual liberties. On one side, I've heard that, and then on the other side, I've also heard comments, and I'm sure that the farmers have read this, that this is for the common good. Mark, you probably have seen this at least, the common good comments out there. And what I want you to note is that the reason why we swear to uphold the US and the state constitutions, part of that is because we also uphold the state laws that undergird that constitution. And one of the really important to me state laws, because I've been involved in this a lot, and Chris Mattson acknowledged this, that I have been involved in lots of land use stuff, the land use process is there in order to balance those individual liberties and protect them with the need for further development of our landscapes. It's inevitable. I had to accept it and understand it, and I'm also asking that you will as well. It's really important for us to go through that process, and you've been through it. I've been disheartened by decisions that the Commissioners have made in the past and staff recommendations, but I have also now read every single one of your letters and your comments, every single page of information. I could quote BJ over there, and I could quote Mark Gabler, I could quote David Hayes. Like, there's a lot of people out here that I see, you've participated in the process, and I want to say that I really respect that. And I've seen some shaking of heads. That's fine, but I really respect the work that you all have put into this. And I'm also glad that yesterday and last night, it rained a lot so that we could all be here without having to think about our fields right now, because I was thinking about my field yesterday, and then it rained a lot, and I'm grateful for it now. So what, one important thing that I felt like the representative for the applicant said is that, this is a quote, "The land use process is dividing the community." Looking at Mark again here, because you told me that, that this process was dividing the community, and I agree. But Todd Sadlow goes on to say that "The master planning process and the successful completion of the project has the potential to bring the community together." And I know, I see some shaking of heads, but I believe that, and I'm asking you to also embrace that. And I want to note that successive Commissioners have approved this project in its various pieces. Dave! That's going to be on the film, is Dave, you know, answering his phone. And I want to note that one of those people who approved various aspects of this, including the purchase of it, was a traditional farmer. And I say traditional because I know that a lot of you out there recognize that I'm a little bit unconventional as far as farmers go. Just want to put that out there, that I recognize that. Some of the concerns that I've heard, the really strong ones, are around the application exclusion zone, and information has been put into the record, oddly enough, both the applicant's representative and the farmer's representative have put the same documents into the record trying to argue different points. And I spent a lot of time looking at those and reading them, and my concern is that if the farmers continue to push their perspective of the AZ, then every road in Yamhill County is going to have, if your blast spraying is going to have 150-foot buffer, and that's very concerning to me, and I hope it'll be concerning to all of you farmers out there, because I'm not trying to say that you shouldn't be spraying, but I do want you to be very careful in how you push this, because that interpretation that has been put in the record by the Opposition's attorney says that. And I see the words in the rule, and I know what that means and the implications for you. I also want to say that the applicant, in this case, the county, is going to work very, very diligently to make sure that there's not conflict between your sprays and the people who are on the transportation corridor. I hope I'm not boring anybody. Is it okay if I keep going?
No.
Okay, now I'm seeing nods. I like this. Thanks, Dan. On our farm, I consider it my responsibility, and you will probably be happy to hear this, I consider it my responsibility to keep sprays off of my property, because I'm making a choice to farm in a different way than my neighbor. And you can talk to both of our neighbors. I farm next to Harry Noah, who grows cherries, and I farm next to Carlton Plants, who grows everything, 4,000 different varieties of plants. And over the years, we've had conflict, and so what I realized I needed to do was, it was my responsibility to not just rely upon the law to protect me from overspraying or concerns about overspraying, but to really take my land, literally, I take my land out of production, to make sure that there isn't a conflict. And as Public Works can attest, my hedge is a little bit crazier than it needs to be. I'm trying to think if there's anybody, Mark might have seen my hedge out there, but I don't know if anybody else has, but I've taken land out of production, and I know that the county can take land essentially out of their property lines to keep- the county can take land essentially out of their property lines to keep the, so there's 24 feet that can be developed on either side, plus a fence to protect and take the responsibility for that spraying onto the county as opposed to on you. And it's an extra step, the county shouldn't need to by law, but I know that from my experience, there's a difference between what the law says and what's our responsibility as good neighbors. And apparently, I need some water. So I want to say that I'm very, very respectful, and I hold the farmers in the room, both the ones who are in opposition to the project and the ones in the room who are proponents of the project, I hold you in great regard. Yamhill County is, and I don't know if you guys know this, maybe Yamhill County's crop production is one of the most diverse in the country. When we were really baby farmers in the early 2000s, we had a researcher come out from Ohio State University, and she was looking at how diverse crop rotations are all around the country, and she said that by the time she got to Yamhill County, she realized that this was the most diverse county in terms of overall rotation. And I'm so proud of that. I feel like Yamhill County has super, super innovative farmers. Like, I'm thinking of Brian Schmidt back there, who does a lot of innovative things and doesn't think inside the box of what traditional agriculture is. And as a farmer who irrigates all of his crops, I feel like that's a crutch compared to the dryland farmers out here who rely upon the rain every year. I'm amazed by that. And so I want you all to know that I'm deeply respectful of your work, and I will be involved in the master planning process, and you can call me, you can shout at me, but I will listen, and you know that I will listen. And now I'm looking at Brian here, but he won't make eye contact with me, so. Really thank you for the work you do. One of the things that I think is less appreciated about the work you do is that you are the stewards of our open spaces, and I think a lot of people love coming to Yamhill County, and a lot of people love living in Yamhill County because of the spaces that you manage and steward for all of us. And I want to make sure that when people are invited into that landscape, that they are very respectful of the work you do.
Mr. Chair, I call for the vote.
Okay, we have called for a vote, so Casey, will you restate your amendment?
This is appropriate for me to tell you how the process needs to go. There are two items that need to happen. The first needs to be the consideration of the repealing of ordinance 904, and if the board does that, then the next step would be to consider the draft for approval, as was moved by Commissioner Kula. So the first motion would need to be to consider the repeal of ordinance 904. So the first step is to consider the repeal of ordinance 904.
Okay, I will make the motion since you know that the board commissioners are doing away with the remove board order 904.
Now we need to have the first and second reading of that ordinance. And hearing no objection, the reading will be by title only.
Any objections?
First reading, this will be ordinance 908, in the matter of the repeal of ordinance 904, adopted by the board on May 31, 2018, planning docket G-01-18 on remand from the Land Use Board of Appeals. So now would be the opportunity, if the board had any other discussion on this matter.
I don't have any, so therefore, according to...
Again, hearing no objection, I would then call for the second reading of draft ordinance 908, in the matter of the repeal of ordinance 904, adopted by the board on May 31, 2018, planning docket G-01-18 on remand from the Land Use Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you, Christian. So we've had two readings of the motion to, which for the board, new board order 908 to remand board order number 90...
That would be to repeal...
To repeal board order number 904.
And this would be ordinance 908.
Okay, and this would be ordinance 908 to repeal ordinance 904. So that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Let the record show that Commissioners Kula and Commissioners Olson voted to implement, or, excuse me, voted in the affirmative, and Commissioner Sterrett voted in the negative, so it's repealed.
Okay, and then now you could, I suggest making the motion again to approve docket G-01-18.
So I'd make a motion to approve item E1, docket number D-01-18.
Okay, we have a motion to approve docket number G-01-08. Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Let the record once again show that Commissioners Kula and Commissioner Olson voted in the affirmative to approve docket G-01-18, and Commissioner Sterrett voted in the negative. Thank you, commissioners.
And thank you, Todd.
Okay, for those that may want to leave, we have one more public hearing, but we can take just a couple minutes if you aren't going to testify or you don't want to stay for the other public hearing, to give everybody just about two or three minutes to get up and leave if you'd like to.
Are we recessed?
Okay, that'll take us to our second public hearing, item A2, and this is docket C-3818 and SDR-4418, and this is an appeal to the Planning Director's approval of a conditional use and site design review for the construction of the winery, tasting room, and accessory uses, and the applicant is Siler Varnum. Okay, I'll put those right there, Ken. So what I'll do is I'll go ahead and I'll open the public hearing, and what I'll do is ask commissioners if there's any calls for abstention or objections to jurisdiction. No calls for objection? Anybody have any objections to the commissioner hearing this, hearing not? So then what we'll do is we'll have you, Christian, or Todd, you going to read the...
I'll do that.
Ken? You again, okay, go ahead, Ken.
Oregon law requires that persons who attend a land use hearing must adhere to certain rights and duties before the hearing begins. First, with regard to the standards for approval, state law, ORS 197.763/5, requires that we list the applicable substantive criteria that must be met in order for the county to approve an application. The standards will be listed by a county planner in a moment as part of the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the standards for approval. Second, the raise or waive the rule. Under Oregon law, any issue that might be raised in an appeal of the county's decision in this matter must be raised before the record of this hearing is closed. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the board based on that issue. Third, and this is directed at the applicant, under ORS 197.796, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval, again, with sufficient specificity to allow the county to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Finally, I will note that under Oregon law, and because this is the initial evidentiary hearing on this matter, any participant, that is anyone who submits oral or written testimony during this hearing, may, before the record is closed, request an opportunity to present additional evidence, argument, or testimony regarding the application. The requests must be made prior to the time the chair announces that the hearing is closed.
Okay, thank you, Ken. That being said, then, I will take us to our staff report.
The applicant's parcel is approximately 4.85 acres and was developed with an older manufactured home on a daylight basement foundation, which is proposed to be used as the winery and tasting room. There's also a new replacement manufactured home that was recently installed. There's a small existing vineyard on the back half of the property, as well as a small area of vines planted along Eola Hills Road. Driveway and proposed winery building are tucked back away from the road among a number of mature trees. All of the surrounding parcels are done for exclusive barn use, either EF20 or EF40. All of the adjacent parcels are also developed in single-family blocks. Predominant land use pattern is small rectangular lots of approximately the same size, or five acres, and developed in single-family drawings. There are two other similarly sized wineries located within 900 feet of the separate parcel. There do not appear to be any existing barn entrances on adjacent properties, but there are some small vineyards and orchards within about a quarter mile of the separate parcel. Under section 402.04G of the Yamhill County zoning ordinance, a winery may be approved through the conditional use process. If a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use, there are not enough acres of grape planted on site to qualify for permitted use winery. The approval criteria applicable to this application are found in sections 402.04G, 402.07A, 1101.02, and 1202.02 of the Yamhill County zoning ordinance. Notification of the application was mailed to neighboring property owners, and a notice was published in the news register. Planning director approved the application with conditions, and an appeal was filed by the friends of Yamhill County.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. That will go ahead, and we'll call on the applicant for the applicant's case.
My name is Terilyn Varnum, and I'm here with my husband, Siler Varnum, as the applicant who lives at 9500 Southeast Eola Hills Road, and we're also here with Jim McGuire, who's part of our team. We thank the Yamhill County Planning Department staff for working with us on our application and their thorough review and approval of our proposed conditional use permit at 9500 Southeast Eola Hills Road on February 8th. As landowners, we have made an investment in Yamhill County to restore previously abandoned and existing vineyard site and contribute to the economic diversity of the region through the creation of a small, sustainable business model. As landowners, we also fully accept the responsibility to be good neighbors. Since we've moved to Yamhill County, we have made it our focus on becoming active members of the growing winery community, as well as putting down roots in Amity. I'm now a high school science teacher at Amity and future mother of two, tied to the well-being of Amity and putting down roots, as well as improving the education of the community, serving as small business owners and role models with a strong work ethic and a pioneering spirit. We've worked extensively with the planning department, related agencies, and our neighbors whom have voiced concerns as well as support. We've met in person with the friends of Yamhill County and listened to their concerns. After discussing their concerns with them, we believe our business model is actually in line with their overall objectives for Yamhill County, yet we find the request to deny this application outright after, up until this point, simply calling for additional conditions of approval to be inconsistent. For two examples, firstly, in their letter submitted yesterday, March 27th, the friends of Yamhill County correctly state that under conditional use criteria that govern this application, it can only be approved if the parcel is suitable for the proposed use considering its size, shape, location, topography, existence of improvements, and natural features. You'll find on page three of the staff report that staff has thoroughly researched this criterion and found that, based upon the evidence, the parcel is suitable for the proposed use and consistent with the criterion. We submitted to the commission that those opposed to our application have not produced evidence to the contrary. Secondly, in their appeal application, the friends of Yamhill County state, as approved by the planning director, the tasting room can operate 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. This statement is false, as alcohol cannot be served 24 hours per day in Oregon per state law. These are two examples and inconsistencies in their appeals. We do not have additional comments to add at this time, as we believe staff has done a thorough job of reviewing our application, their responses that we have made to the comments, and has correctly determined that as conditioned, our application complies with the requirements of the Yamhill County zoning ordinance. In closing, we respectfully ask that the commission, based upon the evidence, deny the appeal and uphold the director's decision and thereby approve our application, and in the process, support small business in Yamhill County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that will take us then to testimony in support of the application, and I have one right here, so I have James McGuire. So James, if you could come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir, James McGuire, 744 Joel Palmer Way, Dayton, Oregon 97114, and I apologize to print out my testimony, I just need to fire up my computer here real quick.
Melissa.
Good morning, commissioners, my name is James McGuire, and I live at 744 Joel Palmer Way in Dayton, Oregon. Though I served on the City of Hillsborough Planning Commission, and am currently a planning commissioner for the city of Dayton, Oregon, I am here both as a private citizen and part of the Varnums' party here today. This testimony is as a private citizen resident of Yamhill County. I have known Siler and Teri for over five years, and I believe planning staff has done a thorough and professional job investigating the evidence for this application. I personally concur with their findings and submit that those opposed to the application have produced no evidence to the contrary. Siler and Teri agree with me that as landowners, they have the right to develop their property to the fullest extent of the code. What they do not have a right to do is be a bad neighbor. They have done everything practical and fully intend to be good neighbors. The main points I see in opposition is that this lot is too small for what the Varnums intend, traffic, and concerns over water usage. I disagree personally and professionally with the submitted arguments against the application. Brooks Winery, literally 900 feet away, is on a similar-sized property, making over 20,000 cases a year annually, and sources fruit from over 30 vineyards, and I talked to the folks at Brooks just last night at an industry event and confirmed those numbers. The Varnums intend to be a small husband-and-wife operation, making a maximum 4,000 cases per year, and as a winery professional with almost 20 years' experience, admittedly, that's ambitious in the proposed space. As a working tasting room manager in Yamhill County for over seven years, I can testify that the location of the winery tasting room complex and my experience both patronizing Brooks and visiting the Varnums, traffic is a non-issue. The amount of traffic this small business will bring to Hoodview and Eola Hills roads is negligible. Water usage, it is obvious that those opposed to this application with regard to water usage have zero experience of running a winery. Per ORS 537.545, the Varnums may pull 5,000 gallons per day from their well. That's 1,825,000 gallons per year. This small winery will use nothing close to that amount of water. A winery this size would use at most maybe 60,000 gallons spread over an entire calendar year. It is my opinion that those opposed to this application simply do not like the application, and as this commission knows, by Oregon Supreme Court precedent, it stipulates that land use applications may not be denied simply because someone does not like the business that is proposed on that property. That otherwise conforms to a governmental body's code. I ask that you deny the repeal and approve the planning... I ask that you deny the repeal and approve the Planning Director's approval of this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, James.
Okay, since this is an appeal, we'll hear the appellant's case. Is there any specific spokesman before, we have a lot of comments, that wants to speak? Sid? Do you want to speak? So, let it show that Sid Friedman from Friends of Yamhill County is going to be the lead speaker in the opposition of the case. So, Sid?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Sid Friedman, representing Friends of Yamhill County, Post Office, Box 1083, McMinnville, 97128. As...
Who? Going for a ride?
I just shrunk.
You forgot to munition our eyes.
So, as you did hear, you know, we did meet with the Varnums, and I'd like to acknowledge that they are a nice, sincere couple, you know, and, you know, I appreciate the discussions we had with them. That said, this application is for, you know, which is for a conditional use winery, tasting room, winemaker dinners, and other events, is on a very small parcel and vineyard in the state designated Eola Hills Groundwater Limited area. The applicants have stated in their application that they hope to stack additional approvals in separate applications for weddings and private parties. So, there's a very important policy question for the Board to consider here. And the fact that the county, county staff may have approved other wineries in groundwater limited areas on small parcels should not be a reason for the Board to avoid this important policy discussion. This parcel is less than five acres, less than a quarter of the minimum lot size. The vineyard is even smaller, three acres of existing overgrown vines and the potential plant, perhaps another half acre of vines. And one of its features is its location in a state designated groundwater limited area. It takes about six gallons of water to process a gallon of wine. That's not the farming aspect, that's the processing aspect. Additional water would be consumed by the proposed tasting room landscaping and events. I want to digress for just a moment to point out that it's misleading to compare this to Brooks. Brooks Winery may be on a five-acre parcel, but they have adjacent parcels with additional vineyard. Brooks has at least 10 to 12 acres of planted vines, that's on the attachment to our written testimony, so I think that's a bit of a red herring. At any rate, under the conditional use criteria, this application can only be approved if it's suitable, if the parcel is suitable for the proposed use considering its size, its location, and its natural features. And the, I, we believe the Board should determine that a very small parcel in a groundwater limited area is not a suitable location for a water-intensive crop processing facility, nor is it suitable for the dinners and other events that are proposed in this application. And for that reason, we ask that you deny the application because of its small size and the natural features and location in the groundwater, state designated groundwater limited area. In the event that you disagree and approve the application, it's clear that additional conditions need to be imposed. You know, despite what you heard, the conditions included in the staff-level approval place no sideboards whatsoever on the size of the winery, and this winery will be bringing in grapes because they can't possibly produce enough grapes to supply the winery on-site. It placed no limits on its tasting room hours, and it's true that OLCC facilities have to close by 2:00 or 2:30 in the morning, but, you know, there's no limit other than that. It placed no limits on the number of winemaker dinners that could be held, they could be held 365 days a year. And it placed no limits on other food service or other events, both large and small. You know, I think we've all learned the hard way that it doesn't matter what's in the application or in the staff report, if it's not in the conditions, it doesn't matter. And in the spirit of compromise, we did meet with the Varnums to discuss additional conditions in the event you deny our appeal and approve the application. And as is detailed in the written testimony, in our written testimony that we submitted and the email correspondence that we attached to it, we were able to reach agreement with the applicants on several additional conditions, but we haven't been able to reach agreement on their desire for an additional 12 unspecified events in addition to their winemaker dinners and winery open houses, et cetera. So, I'm not going to, you have in print, I believe you have in print in front of you, you know, what we agreed to and what we didn't agree to, I'm not going to read it verbatim, but we were able to agree on a maximum production limit for the winery. We're able to agree on tasting room hours, open house weekends, where larger events on open house weekends, and we're able to agree on the number of winemaker dinners and luncheons that might be, occur, as well as areas of adequate parking. The area of disagreement that remained was their desire to hold up to 12 additional events outside of normal tasting room hours, and these were, you know, unspecified events other than that they would be for the primary purpose of promoting wine produced in conjunction with a winery. We strongly believe that additional unspecified events with virtually no sideboards are not suitable for such a small vineyard, and that would at best supply only a fraction of the grapes needed for its production. But in an attempt to avoid this hearing and, you know, hopefully reach a resolution prior to it, we did offer to accept six such annual events, but the applicant didn't agree with that. So, and that's all laid out in the email correspondence, which, you know, I let them know I was going to submit that as part of our testimony. We weren't, you know, blindsiding this. Had open communications with them throughout, and they, I appreciate that. So, that's kind of where it is. There's one additional condition that we discussed, it's intent with the applicant. We didn't discuss its language that relates to food service. They don't intend to have a licensed commercial kitchen on-site. They propose to use off-site catering for their meals from a licensed commercial caterer. I talked to the Associate Planner about this. I do believe they're going to recommend the additional condition we recommend on that, but that would basically put into an actual condition limits on using on-site food prep from an unlicensed kitchen. So, that concludes what I really prepared, have prepared to say, other than to sort of suggest that, first, you consider the overarching policy question here as to whether or not this parcel is even suitable for the proposed uses, given its location in the groundwater limited area and its extremely small size. If not, you know, I guess your discussion ends there and the application is denied. If you disagree, you know, I would hope that you would consider that the conditions that were worked out were kind of a minimum, and that perhaps stricter conditions should apply, and also grapple with the question as to whether or not there should be any additional unspecified events, and if so, how many. So, that concludes my remarks. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Go ahead, Casey.
I do have some questions, if you're willing to.
Sure.
Some of them might be for some of the wine growers behind you, but, so, it's the, it's commercial activity in conjunction with farm use, right?
Correct.
So, it's the 215, 452?
No. ORS 215, 452 is permitted use wineries.
That's right.
That have at least 15 acres of planted vines.
Sorry, I used the wrong.
The conditional use in conjunction with farm use allows for approval of crop processing facilities.
Right.
In this case, the actual nexus to farm use on-site is pretty tenuous because, at this point, they have no producing vines, they have overgrown vines that have to be rehabilitated, but there is some.
When I read the statute for, I wanted to call it CACFO, but that's not.
That's an acronym that's used.
Okay, good.
I've seen that acronym before.
SASFO? So, when I read it, though, I didn't see a vineyard, I didn't see an acreage number or percent associated with that particular statute. Was I missing something?
No, you're not.
Okay.
There is no acreage requirement, that's, they're to be considered on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
And presumably, the county would find that some are suitable and some are not. It's a conditional use.
Right. So, then, with, I'm just thinking of Brooks and their, the example, since the applicant said that they're similar, or I think James said that they're similar, but you're saying that they're not similar, and are you saying they're not similar because the vines are on a different tax lot, but that's adjacent to it?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No. I'm saying they're not similar, and so, they're not similarly sized insofar as they have triple or quadruple the amount of vineyard that this, this operation would have.
On the same tax lot?
Not on the same tax lot, but on the same tract, tract of contiguous parcels.
Okay, okay.
So, Brooks, I mean, at best, if they get all their vines back into production and plant an additional half acre, which I think they, so they intend to do, they might supply 30% in rough numbers, 30% of the crop required for their facility.
Okay. And what is Brooks' acreage looking like, again, compared to their?
Roughly 12 acres, 10 to 12 acres.
And they're producing how many cases?
20,000.
I heard 20, okay, I thought I heard the number.
Yeah.
20,000, Commissioner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sourced from 30 different vineyards, in addition to their own.
Okay, so, it's, we're looking at 12 to 20 versus 3 and 1/2 to 2,000, is that?
So, so...
Or, you're asking for four, but Friends is?
As a max, four was our max in our application.
And we were able to agree on a production limit of 2,000. They would produce about 3,000, or 30%, potentially 30% of the crop.
Okay. And then, one other question I had about that, or I wanted to clarify that you are presenting conditions, at least in your, your email and the conversation that you had with the Varnums, and those are directly related to what the statute offers as guides, right? Because I feel like I saw in there that they were like, if you approve this, here's things you can add as conditions in the statute.
Yeah, some of them are, I would say, some of them are not related to anything in statute.
Okay.
Something like reasonable hours of operation so that a tasting room doesn't stay open until midnight every night.
Okay.
Something, you know, reasonable conditions so that there isn't, you know, something doesn't sort of morph into a restaurant, or quasi-restaurant, that serves dinners four nights a week, every night of the week, every week, you know, which unfortunately we have seen when reasonable sideboards aren't established.
Okay. But I noticed that there were, it says if local government permits these conditions, or these areas can be addressed.
Right, right. The county, the county has a fair amount of discretion.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sid.
Yeah. Thanks for filling the particular gap.
Okay, now we'll move to other testimony in opposition, and I will go through, go through these, and the first one we have is Tom Abrago. So, Tom, come on forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Chair Olson, Commissioners' staff. I'm Tom Abrago. I live at 19105 Northeast Trunk Road in Dundee. I have just brief comments, I would just, my feeling is that this proposal does not meet the requirements under zoning ordinance 1202/02, setting out the standards of review criteria. As, I just would back up what Sid said, as far as it's not suitable due to its size, nor suitable due to its natural features in the groundwater-protected zone.
Okay.
I would respectfully ask that you deny the application.
Okay, we have any questions? Mary?
No.
Casey?
No, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. The next one we have is Susan Meredith. So, Susan, why don't you come on forward, please?
Let's see if I can get this in the right place. Can you hear me? Am I in the right place?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're in the right place.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Susan Meredith, and I live at 14100 Southwest McCabe Chapel Road in McMinnville, 97128. I also am the co-owner of Meredith Mitchell Vineyards, located at the same address. I have been asked by Jason Lett, the owner of the Iry Vineyards in Dundee, who unfortunately could not be here this morning to deliver his testimony on this application. It reads as follows. "Commissioners, I am writing to ask you to deny the application for a winery and tasting room on a parcel less than five acres. While I respect Mr. Varnar as a colleague in the wine industry, the application is out of alignment with the definition of a winery in a state law. Wine growers and the Amhill County Planning Director, former Mike Brandt, were among the key stakeholders of the discussions around winery definition at the state level in 2013. At that time, we upheld the principle that although wineries have high impacts on surrounding farm uses, a winery should be allowed outright if it had a significant investment planted in acreage of grapes, at least 15 contiguous acres. This application asks for a winery. It should be rejected because the site doesn't meet the definition of a winery, so a winery cannot be established on the property. Since they can't establish a winery, they are not entitled to the privileges of a tasting room. If the grape processing facility is to be allowed under the commercial activity in conjunction with farm use statute, statute, then it, and the associated activities around it must be incidental and subordinate to the existing farm use on the tract. Only a very small grape processing facility, very limited tasting room hours, and a very limited number of agritourism activities should be considered incidental and subordinate to what appears to be about three acres of planted grapes." He says two, but I think I heard correctly this morning, it's three. "I ask that the intent of the law to reward only significant investments planted in grape acreage with winery privileges be upheld. Please deny this application and ask the applicant to seek a site with more planted acreage. Respectfully, Jason Lett. As many of you know, too, I am a member of the wine industry, and I have no intent whatsoever to discourage anyone from joining our industry. However, I concur completely with Mr. Lett's analysis. This property should not be allowed to exercise the extensive number of wine events requested in the application because it technically is not in compliance with the state law for a winery. For the county to grant such largesse to a winery on such a small parcel is grossly unfair to wineries who have made a significantly larger land investment in order to make the state's 15-acre requirement. This applicant has not done the same and therefore has not earned the same privileges. It is my opinion that the sparse number of existing commissions, the conditions imposed by the planning department, as well as those subsequently negotiated with the applicant, are far too lenient and set a dangerous precedent for the future by encouraging other applications for wineries on parcels less than the state's 15-acre minimum. After all, cases like this are exactly why the state set a minimum acreage figure to qualify for a winery in the first place, to not only discourage this type of application, but to actually prevent winery operations on small acres, parcels of farmland. Nor does such a small venture appear to be financially viable. With only four acres or less of total plantable land, they will need all the potential revenue they can get from the numerous events they want to have to supplement their farming and wine-making income. This is not the way it's supposed to work on farmland. For example, at best, they can expect to harvest approximately three tons of quality fruit per acre, which will make approximately 700 cases of wine. With the standard cost of goods at 40 to 50% of total revenue, doing all the work themselves, including 100, selling 100% of the wine out the door, and not having to use distributors, plus the purchase of expensive wine-making equipment, farm machinery, a minimum amount of outside labor, supplies, and overhead, their net profit will be slim or nil. The bottom line, this entire operation is much too small to be economically viable, and buying fruit from other vineyards is both expensive and the amount of fruit such a small, excuse me, winery can process is limited. In summary, the tail is wagging the dog here. Their business model is highly dependent on non-farm tourist income, as its pri- Their business model is highly dependent on non-farm tourist income as its primary source of revenue, but not on farm income as is required on EF20 land. Please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Susan, can I ask for some clarification?
Sure.
Okay, and I might add, just for the record, that a lot of people who are sitting out in the audience are longtime friends of mine, so, just so you know.
Mine too, so.
But, so your concern in your testimony, is it that this is a project that's like a tourist facility that's, like, pretending to be a winery?
Not, not that extreme, Casey, no.
Okay, okay, no, I was looking for something that was less extreme, but can you?
Yeah, I think the number of events and activities associated with this particular site that they've requested, they're trying to follow the guidance of the larger wineries in the county who qualify for all those events, and that a winery of this size hasn't earned the privileges that the other wineries who have made the significant investment in land required by the state, they enjoy those privileges, but that doesn't, it's, it's unfair to pass those same allocations down to someone who's, who's not qualifying.
Right, okay, thank you for clarifying it. The, the other thing I wanted to ask about was, and I'll, maybe I'll ask Ken Friday as well in this, so Jason Lett explains from his perspective that a winery is really only a winery if it's a permitted use, or an allowed use winery, would that be the language? Is it allowed? Sometimes I get confused.
We call it permitted use.
Permitted use, a permitted use winery is one where there's at least fifteen acres of planted vineyards, but then, there's the process that we're going through right now, right?
Exactly.
And so, Jason Lett is, he's not here, I would be asking him this question, but you've also brought it up, so, the idea is that it's not really a winery if it doesn't have fifteen acres of vineyard associated with it on EFU land?
No, that's not my position.
Okay.
I can't speak for Jason, as you know. My position is that the number of events and the extensive tasting room hours or whatever, that, that they're trying to enjoy the same privileges as win, wineries who do meet the state statute do, and they don't deserve them, because they have not, they have not made the investment that, that the others have.
Okay.
And that it's unfair to the other members of the industry to, to allow that to happen. If they're, if they have thirty percent of the land, then they should have thirty percent of the privileges, I guess, I don't know how else to say it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you, is it like, your idea is that there's a box this big, and you, you get this many privileges or events because your box is this big, but if your box is this big, you shouldn't get this many privileges, is that?
I, I mean, I, I don't mean to be so crass, but I guess that's the way I feel.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out.
That it should be on a, on a, a sliding scale, I guess, would be a proper, that their privileges should be, correlate to the size of the property and the production from farm use that it, it can provide. If you're, if you're selling six hundred or seven hundred cases of wine, you, you know, you need a certain number of people coming to your tasting room, but you, but you shouldn't have to have all the privilege, or you shouldn't, you don't deserve all the privileges that people who have made a much more significant investment enjoy.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you for working.
Do you have any questions for Susan, Mary?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next one in opposition we have is Ilsa Purce, so Ilsa, come on forward.
My name is Ilsa Purce, five seven six five Mineral Springs Road in Carlton, and I'm not going to get into all the intricacies of the wine industry, which Susan has obviously far more knowledge of than I, and Carla will be speaking as well, and I would simply say that should this be approved, my huge concern is fire, and I saw no conditions that required a, a large onsite water storage facility that would be available in the event of fire. We all know how quickly fire spreads in the summer around here, and so I would, I'm, I didn't see the email from the fire department, but I know that a lot of facilities that do get permission to do things are required to have onsite water storage adequate to fight a fire. And I also would like to just say that as planning happens in this county and in other places, you know, we can never know what we, we don't know what's going to come, but I have a hunch that ten years ago, none of us imagined that wineries all around the county would become landing sites for helicopter tourism, and I would like all of you to think about small parcels, such as proposed here, everybody on that, in that area would be entitled to what the Varnams are entitled to, and someday down the road, they could all be the places where helicopters want to land. Oh, that sounds far-fetched, I'm sure you're thinking, but it's not far-fetched, because we already know the impact that helicopters are having on all the area wineries now, and you need to start thinking about, well, we'll permit this one, well, when the next one comes along, they're going to have to be permitted too, because you just did the one before them, and the next one, and the next one, and that historic area was platted with very small lots a long time ago. That's over, so now you need to figure out what works when you have so many small lots in an agricultural zone, where everybody is going to be entitled to whatever you allow for this venture. And it's not to say that there won't be high-quality wine coming off of this small area, from what I've been told, it's not ready for prime time yet, so grow into it, and there's nothing that starts out with weddings and bar mitzvahs and whatever you want to have on your site before you even know what kind of wine you're producing or how much you're going to get. So, I think that the county is putting the cart in front of the horse by just saying to everyone, come on and we'll let you do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ilsa.
I want to ask you one question.
Yes.
About that, would you like to see, from your perspective, a condition that addresses like wild, or wildfires and firefighting water?
Well, I want to see firefighting water for sure, because I know that's been required at other facilities, and especially in a groundwater-limited area. I think that that should be an absolute requirement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ilsa.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one we have, Susan Karp, Susan, come on up, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
This is Susan Karp, K A R P, eight seven five five Southeast Three Trees Lane, Amity, Oregon, nine seven one oh one. Get myself together here, can, can you hear me okay?
Might pull a little bit closer to you.
Sorry, is that better?
That's better.
I know you can do this.
And I have, thanks, I'm a little nervous, I have a note to myself to talk slowly here. Okay, hello, good morning, everyone, and hello, Commissioners. I have never met the Varnams, I suspect they're very nice people, but they bought this property knowing what the zoning is, there was no reasonable expectation to be granted this application, and I'm not going to reiterate concerns that other people here are making. What I would like to do is focus on what I see as conflicts within the staff report findings, and just actually, I'd kind of like to mention as a side, and as, as an aside, that I am a little perplexed, that I don't understand the criteria by which the planning department determined, determined that such a substantial conditional request did not warrant any public hearing by the planning commission. Okay, in the staff report, it says that, that it's only four point eight five acres, and then quote, "But it is already almost fully developed." Well, how can that be? There's a manufactured home on the property, there's no winery, there's no tasting room, there's no outdoor bocce ball game site, and so how is this almost fully developed? Twice, the staff report says, that the proposed use will be confined primarily inside existing structures, slash tasting room activities will take place primarily indoors, will not produce noise above what normally occurs in this area, that's mentioned twice. Yet twice in the same report, it states that applicant, quote, "Proposes to have an outdoor seating tasting area in the middle of the vineyard, and an area that currently does not have any vines," and later in the report, mention is made, again, of the addition of outdoor lawn games and tasting area. The report mentions in two separate places that all of the adjacent properties, quote, "All of the adjacent properties are developed with single family dwellings," and later, quote, "The area is predominantly in residential use with hazelnuts, vineyards, and a couple of wineries." So there seems to be a disconnect on noise, don't get me wrong, residents know full well the zoning they bought into, they expect farm noise, tractors, odors, planting, harvest activities, and they expect the quiet enjoyment of spending time outside on their property with certain farming noise concessions made to where they've chosen to reside. But this application is so much more than a winery and tasting room. The applicant's intent is very clear from their application, long tasting room hours, daily outdoor patio tasting, a venue for numerous events, outdoor games, I even heard tournaments are proposed. I had always understood that tasting rooms and winemaker dinners, or fruit stands and the like, were permitted as a way to help farmers sell what they produce, but the farming comes first, the focus should be on the farming. That is not the case here. And importantly, I want to point out, the staff report finding says, and please bear with me on this, and I'm going to quote here, it's at, on page three, the bottom of section two, section B three C, and the quote is, "There are two other wineries with tasting rooms, Perrin, Brooks Winery, and Goshaw," I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that right, I apologize, "Sellers, within nine hundred feet of the applicant's property on similarly small parcels," that was also said earlier today, continuing with the quote, "Within about one point five miles of the applicant's property, there are at least five other wineries operating," end quote. Okay, so it certainly infers that the applicant's parcel size and the requests for use are not unus, unusureful for the area. I decided to check that out, didn't sound quite right to me. A request was made to the planning department to identify the, quote, "At least five other wineries within one point five miles," statement, in addition to Brooks and Goshaw. The packet I just gave you on the first page is the response from the planning department, where it states Mystic, Iota Sellers, Domain Coteau Dubé, Calamity Hill, and Duke's Family Vineyards, distance is approximate, end quote, "As the crow flies." All right, what I would like you to look at is a chart, it should be on your second page, that I have made. Here you have, so, so these are the, these are the wineries that are inferring they're similar, and that this would not be a unique application here. So again, we've got Brooks, Goshaw, Mystic, Iota, Duke's, Calamity Hill, and Domain Coteau. Brooks Winery, I know there were, Casey, you had questions about the winery size, I, in your packet, there's a copy of an email I received from Janie Brooks Haig, from Brooks Winery. She says, "Our estate is eighteen acres, the ones you see from the tasting room. We contract forty-five or so additional acres that are adjacent to our estate," so they own eighteen. "Beyond that, we contract with about twenty other vineyards throughout the Willamette, two in Southern Oregon and two in Columbia Gorge." So, so the size of, when you're talking similar size, the size of Brooks is eighteen acres, fifteen of those, I believe, of those eighteen are in vines. Goshaw Sellers is four point eight five acres, I got that from the tax records. Mystic Wines, there's an email from Mystic Wines in here, they have nine acres. Iota Sellers has fifty-seven acres. Duke's Family Vineyard has fifty-eight acres. Calamity Hill has four point eight five acres, and I'll address that in a moment, and Domain Coteau has five acres, and I'll address that in a moment also. Okay, on the, a couple of things, the Brooks Winery, the, just, are, the applicant's requesting daily tasting from ten to six, that's longer than any of these wineries. Brooks Winery is open daily from eleven to five. Goshaw is Friday through Sunday, twelve to five. Mystic is weekends only, twelve to five, shorter and less frequently in the winter. Iota is by appointment only. Duke's Family Vineyard is by appointment only. Calamity Hill has nine days a year they're allowed to take tasting, and they end at five o'clock. Domain Coteau Dubé isn't even a winery, it's a vineyard, it's right down on my street. Okay, so, you have Brooks, which is not similar, you have Goshaw Wines Sellers, and I went to the planning department yesterday, and I was told that's totally different zoning from this applicant. The zoning is R I Resource Industrial. It was explained to me that was a designation that this property received from decades ago that allowed tasting room, I think without a winery, to promote wines in this area when the wines in this area promotion was relatively new. I believe that may have been the same thing at Mystic, but I'm not sure. Mystic Wines, nine acres, very short tasting. Iota Sellers, huge, fifty-seven acres, open by appointment. Duke's Family, same thing. Calamity Hill, I happen to know about, it's nearby as well, and about eighteen years ago, when they did their, I guess, application, I was told it fell through the cracks at the planning department, and a tasting room was permitted on the four point eight five acres without a winery, but the conditional was that they could only be open a total of nine days a year. They do Thanksgiving, Labor Day, and I think one other. So that doesn't really, that's not a similar thing here as well, and as I said, Domain Coteau Dubé is purely a vineyard. And as far as the distance, they're talking about nearby, they're talking about one point five miles, and the email from planning even said, "As the crow flies." Okay, Brooks, Goshaw, and Mystic are close by. Iota Sellers, by crow flies, is over a mile by crow flies. Duke's Family, same thing. Calamity Hill, one point eight miles by crow, and Domain Coteau, one point seven miles by, by crow. They're all over, oh, between four and five miles by car. So, these are not similar. The, the statement, the statement that the two are close by are similar, Brooks certainly is not, and that the others within one point five are, are, seem to imply that those wineries, and one that isn't, are similar to what's going on and being requested here. The, I do not live on Eola Hills Road, I do live in the Eola, Amity Hills AVA. As I said, the Domain Coteau Dubé Vineyard is on the list supposedly of similar parcels is on my street. I live on Three Trees Lane on top of Walnut Hill Road. My parcel and the others on the hillside are the same size as this applicant's. I am here before you because, like it or not, this is not a one-off, you are setting a precedent for this size parcel, whether you intend to or not. When you look at my Three Trees Lane hillside from Walnut Hill, you see seven vineyard parcels of this size, kind of stacked on top of each other. Four have residences, two have out-of-state owners, another owner lives in Portland. There's more parcels like this on the other side of Three Trees, and on the opposite side as well, twenty-seven similar-sized parcels in farming of some sort right there. And there's many more like them in the Eola Hills and elsewhere in the county. The applicant's parcel is very small agriculturally speaking, with very limited farm production, outsized, and overshadowed by the applicant's objective. The correlation between farm use and what is primarily a hospitality venue is askew. And in fact, an analogy occurred to me. It really seems to be, when you look at everything that the applicant is proposing, is they basically want to be Brooks, right next door, it's a winery with tasting room, numerous events, daily tasting room hours, the less hours than the applicant is getting, this is everything the applicant wants to be, everything it's requesting, but Brooks Winery is on eighteen acres, fifteen of which is vineyard. Brooks is invested in the farming aspect. The applicant is requesting to have all the same things, but shrunk down onto five acres. Why should this be granted? People put very deliberate thought into deciding what our zoning should be, and how much acreage should be for wineries, a lot of thought and effort. I am not aware of anything like this on this size parcel. I'm not surprised that the planning department had difficulty coming up with something. And zoning-wise, if conditional uses are granted without a really compelling reason, doesn't, doesn't that make it, I know this is a little harsh, but doesn't that kind of make it a mockery of the regulations? And I urge the Commissioners to reject this application in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Can I ask you some questions, though?
If I have the answer, sure, you can ask anyway.
All right, so there's, I think, three that I have for you. One is, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the commercial activity is in conjunction with farm use, it doesn't, does it require that you have a vineyard on site? on site?
I, I can't imagine so.
It does not. Okay, so it doesn't require, okay.
I don't think so. I mean, I don't know, but I don't, I doubt it.
Under Oregon statute, then, I mean, I've heard an argument that this'll, this'll be a precedent, I'm going to come back to the word precedent in a moment, but, that any other parcel could have a little vineyard and a winery. But couldn't any other parcel in EFU's own land already have one? And couldn't, I mean, under our current rules, anybody could be applying. Catherine's shaking her head in the back. But I, I mean, I think that that's how it currently stands.
I think the people who are probably shaking their heads in the back will probably have a, a better answer than I do. I don't have eyes in the back of my head.
Okay, so I'll go.
But, but as a precedent, somebody who's going to apply for conditional use, I mean, why, if, if you just give conditional uses all the time?
Yeah.
It's kind of like, then why even have to have, make a conditional use? I mean, it's kind of a mockery of, of that kind of thing. And if this is granted, I mean, I or someone on my hill could say, "Okay, I want the same thing, and look, you've already done it. So why on earth could you stop me from doing it? Because you've already done it." So I could, we could have these all over the place.
I would take issue with the idea that, that there's a mockery going on.
Well, that's kind of a harsh word, but you understand my point.
I, well, I want to, I want to clarify that. I just approved an application with conditions, and there were like 20, 400 pages or more of testimony in that, from various perspectives. And so I think there's still a process here that we're, we're wrestling with, and I think the wrestling is important. So I just want to clarify that. But what do you, what do you exactly mean by precedent? Do you mean, like, legal?
Sure. Well, just, just what I said, if, if, if this is granted, and somebody else on my hill or anyplace else, or a lot of people, submit the same application, how are you going, how are you going to say, "We've got a proliferation of this, and this is too much, it's gotten out of hand"? Because once it starts, you can't stop it.
And I, oh, I want to take issue with that, though. I don't feel like, and Susan's a friend of mine, just so you know. But I really want to clarify that I don't think that we, that we're establishing case law here, and that's what I hear.
You're establishing a precedent.
But a precedent suggests that we can't just stop it. And I, I don't see a reason why we couldn't just stop it. So is there, we literally couldn't, the next application, say no? I mean.
On what basis? Take you to court and say, "What, what basis? You let this happen? How are you, how are you stopping, what, for what reason are you stopping me? It's the exact same application."
Right, and I don't think that the approval, if we were to approve it, I don't think that that's what would establish a precedent.
Absolutely, it does, in my opinion.
Just a second.
Sorry.
I, I just want to get this out there, is that right now, there is a process for the CACFOs, and if we, if we allow that that's a process that's legitimate, if we're not going to the legislature to ask them to stop it, then we, we have a process, but we don't have a flood of applications on every EFU's own land. But maybe Catherine in the back thinks we do.
It doesn't matter if you don't have them now. You could have them tomorrow, or next week, or next year.
Because of approving this, is that?
You, you wouldn't have a basis to, to not approve it. To not approve the next one, next 10, next whatever, all over. So it's, it's kind of like, it's pretty much of, to me, in my opinion, it's pretty much of a pivotal point here. There, there's lots of parcels this size, this size, all, I mean, there's 27 right at the top of my hill. They're all over the county. It depends, it depends what you want to do.
And then you asked about, or you mentioned events, and how you really feel like this is something that's focused on events. And my question that I noted here was, didn't the legislature provide the possibility of events on parcels at the request of grape growers and winemakers?
My, my point, what I was trying to say, was that this parcel size, what they want to do, this is more focused as a, and I think it was also mentioned by perhaps Ilsa or Susan, I don't remember, the farming focus, the farming aspect, is not the primary aspect on this small piece of property with all of the things that they want to do. There's some farming, but it's largely hospitality, it seems, kinds of things. You're talking outdoor game areas. You're talking, you know, different things like that. So that was, that was my point.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
I know I'm boring every other commissioner here.
That's all right.
But I want to know, so.
Do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does he have any questions?
I think he doesn't.
Mr. Olson, do you have any questions for me?
No, I don't have any questions for you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, next one I have is Catherine Jernstedt. So Catherine, why don't you come on forward?
That was good timing. Great.
My name is, my name is Catherine Jernstedt. I reside at 8156 Northeast Mineral Springs Road. I'm also a part of Friends of Yamhill County, but SIDS carry in the load on this one. Couple of quick responses. This is one of three applications currently open, requesting winery on otherwise not outright permitted parcels.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, and again, you know, it's, it's lovely to get together like this. I appreciate seeing people that, friends, but it should not require that people have to make an appeal in order to get consistent conditions and sideboards on these conditional applications. Because you cannot write a rule that anticipates every possible scenario and outcome, that's just not feasible, these kinds of outlets, some would call them loopholes, get included to address truly unique situations. What I would dispute is that the unique qualities of this site make it appropriate for this use. Appreciate the comment about the significance of conditions. We've learned from hard experience that unless it is a clearly written and specific condition, it is meaningless. Even observations made in the application and the staff report down the road are not necessarily enforceable. And with regard to precedent, I don't know if that's a legal term of art, if that's the appropriate way to describe this, but the integrity and equity of the application of our comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance is called into question when people are able to leverage other non-complying or not outright permitted uses to keep building on that. And I appreciate Commissioner Sterrett's comment about the role of agriculture in Yamhill County and the importance of protecting it. We conflate viticulture with winery. One is plant, crop planting, one is crop processing. And there's no limits, so long as you've got the soil and the nerve to try it, to plant grapes anywhere. And aside from the initial establishment, they are not a particularly water-intensive crop. It is when you begin, the winery, the crop processing, the, for every gallon of wine, six gallons of water is needed. That's when things like it's, this site's characteristic as in a water-limited area is a factor that needs to be considered. And I'm, I'm conflicted about saying this, because it's only hearsay, but I have been told that Brooks has had to shut down events and tasting room because they've run out of water. They've, you know, they have a water right, they have these things, but a water right doesn't put water in the ground. If you have a limited flow well, you can get to the point where you pull the handle and it doesn't go away anymore. Again, this is an anecdote, but this concentration of event, winery, these sorts of activities should not be a justification for more of them, it should be a cause of concern for depletion of water in that area. I would say that it's incumbent upon you as our elected leaders to give some policy guidance, to defend the equity and integrity of our land use system. I would also suggest that you imagine the positive impact that some of these sorts of investments could have in our small, struggling rural communities. Another gathering place, food service venue, something like that could make a world of difference and have a tremendous positive impact. And also that permitting these sorts of outliers is creating an unfair disadvantage to those who have, as you've heard, created the business entity, made the investment. Again, I mentioned the three of them. I'm tasked with talking to one of the others, and again, a lovely person, but they want a winery without planting grapes. I don't want to do ex parte comments here, but there is a flow pressure building in the pipeline on this. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Did I answer your questions?
So, Casey, I'm sure you probably have a question?
Yeah, I, I think that you did. I'm, I'm not certain from my own perspective whether that's a flood, having three open ones, because I don't know how many have happened in the past. So that's, that's the one, I'm, is it a flood?
We select only a handful out of all of the public notices.
Yeah, that's what I've noticed, so.
Yeah.
That's why I pay more attention, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so the, the one thing that I wonder is, is there, beyond what SIDS has proposed, are there further conditions that you would like to see the county impose? And do those go to some level of policy guidance that you would like the commissioners to move forward with? Does that make sense, my question?
Yeah.
Like, is there something now, but is there something bigger?
Well, part of it is what does in fact get memorialized in the conditions. Because there's language about income has to be derived from the farm activity, not the events and ancillary sorts of things. But then that, Mr. Friday has set up, the issue of collecting the data and bird-dogging that is somewhat burdensome for his staff. I just, these are farm parcels. They need to be developed and protected for farm use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, we still have a few more here, so Ed Farrar, Ed, come on forward. You don't want to say anything? Oh, written, yours was written. Thanks, Ed. I think Susan did a good enough job. Okay, then we have Michelle McMillan. Come on forward, Michelle, and sign and state your name for the rec, and address for the record, please.
Hello, this is my first time doing this. My name is Michelle McMillan, and I live at 21375 Southeast Cherry Blossom Lane, one parcel down from Brooks Winery, one parcel to the south. And I would first of all like to thank Friends of Yamhill County for paying the fee to object to this ruling, because as a private citizen, having to pay $250 to object to something every time it comes along would be prohibitive. And when Brooks was applied for, same thing. I happen to know the Bernard's who planted the vineyard, most of which was planted after we bought our home in 1995. Friends with them, they gave us permission to ride horses and walk on their property, and clearly, the farm use was there, long before the winery was conceived, or at least before it was put in process. And the farm use is undeniable there. They planted the product, they had plenty of product, they put in a processing facility with which to process the product, and it's also become quite a commercial venue for visitors. I was surprised, we were, I think, all of us on our road were surprised that the Brooks Winery was approved without any conditions of improving the road. It is a one-lane gravel road, and there are, there, it has improved as their parking has improved, but there were a lot of times where if we had a fire, or my husband has an emergency, he's a large animal veterinarian, he could not get his big truck through our road to get out to respond to emergency, we would not have been able to have someone respond to our home in an emergency, because the road was not improved. And people who come to these kinds of facilities generally come from cities or urban areas. They have no concept of the use of the land around them. They think they can park on farmland, they think they can park on the gravel road, and restrict the use of the residents and the farmers in the area. We have farmed parcels beyond Brooks. A tractor could not have gotten through there because of the visitors to Brooks. And as far as the limited ground use, we're there. When we bought our property in 1995, it was with a five-gallon-a-minute well. That's what it tested at. And we have lived in fear every year since 1995, as we've watched a house put in on our south property line, a house put on our east property line, Brooks on our north side, one lot away, that our well is going to go dry. And who do we go to to say, "What's the recourse here? We pre-existed all these other developments. Where do we go to get a new well paid for when other uses have perhaps sucked from the aquifer that we are tapped into?" Being there since 1995, I'm very aware of the property that is under consideration. It has not been an actively farmed vineyard since 95. It has gone continually downhill, probably in the last 10 years. The wires are broken, the brambles have grown up, the vines are not tended or harvested. I don't understand why you're considering a farm use application when it's not being farmed. Brooks farmed the vineyard for years, decades, before they put in a tasting room and a wine processing facility. Like someone said, this is putting the tail before the dog. This is strictly a commercial venture. They're saying, "Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna eventually bring the vineyard back into production." You don't know if they will or not. You're saying, "We're gonna let them have this commercial venture, and unless, like someone said, unless you have everything out specifically, you will do this, you will do this, you won't do this, you won't do this," you don't know what they're going to do. This kind of a commercial venture would be better placed in a community. Why not Amity? It's growing, it's making improvements, it's putting in things that make it much more appealing, the sidewalks, the lights, the new restaurants. When we first moved to the hill, Amity was a town that you avoided because you would get a speeding ticket if you were going 32 miles an hour, and it had nothing to draw you at all. Seriously. And the town has improved, it's wonderful, so why don't we bring more commercial venues to towns that are improving and drawing people? Yeah, we have helicopter traffic over our home, a lot, because of Brooks. We don't need more, and the noise is an issue. Traffic is an issue, and that traffic isn't always sober, and that impacts the community. You know, if everybody came in on a bus or a limo, so I knew that they had a designated driver, that would be great. But it impacts our ability to get up and down the roads, it impacts the noise in an agricultural area, it impacts water, which is life. We don't irrigate anything. We have pasture, I have a herd of registered Shetland sheep, I raise for breeding stock, and I sell the fleeces to hand spinners at a ridiculous price per pound, because I keep them coated and there's a market for it. But all we do with our water is give the humans water, give the animals necessary water, we don't irrigate our pastures, we don't even water our lawn, because we don't want to lose that five gallons a minute. How do I know that this isn't going to tap into the aquifer that we use? How can you know that it's not going to tap into the aquifer we use? This, grapes are great, they don't even get irrigated when they're planted. It's a good use of the land on our hill. The grapes like it, it's not water-intensive, it's not, at least the way Brooks does it, it's not chemical-intensive. But then you bring in the processing facility, and the water use skyrockets. And then you bring in people who want to taste and to have events, and water use skyrockets. That is not an appropriate use of a groundwater-limited area. And people who live there could be driven out, because we no longer have water to drink. I think that's important. And I would ask that you turn this proposed use down for those who live there, as well as all the other good arguments that others have made about the farm use comes before the commercial use. Make sure I covered all my points here. I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
Michelle, are you suggesting that something about Oregon water law should be adjusted? I'm just thinking about exempt wells versus...
I think it would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that there should be a limit, in a known, limited groundwater area.
Yeah.
The number of wells that can be punched into that area should be limited, and there should be a grandfather clause of oldest wells coming before newer wells, and if a newer well goes in, and there may be such a law, I know we used to have someone come up from Salem on a yearly basis to test the area wells to keep an inventory of the groundwater. My understanding is that that ended, because funding ended.
Yeah.
So, they were aware of that. And I asked him once, you know, well, what happens if we lose our well? And he says, well, you could go after the person who came in after you. Well, I don't know how expensive that is. I don't know if that's within the financial feasibility of a private citizen. If I have to go against Brooks, who's going to win? Seriously. I'm going to have to move, and they're going to go, oh, there's another five acres we can buy up and plant and vines. Maybe that's the intent, I don't know, but that's not what you guys should allow, because this should be about farm use and preserving the rural areas of the county, and not turning our communities into extended vineyards. Why not concentrate them? Not up on the farm use area, but in the communities. We have a lot in Carlton, we have a lot in Amity, we have some in Amity, we have some in McMinnville. Why not congregate more there, instead of spreading them across rural Yamhill County? Let that be for people to live and to use the land.
It seems like one of the challenges, and you're doing an amazing job, I want you to know, really, thank you. One comment is that I'm not sure if we really, under our current knowledge of the aquifer underlying your groundwater-limited area, I'm not sure if anybody really could be able to tell who killed your well, as it were.
Right.
Who killed your well, which I see as a complicating factor. But I would love for us to have that information.
And I don't know that you could. I've done some research on where our well is located, and some of the documentation for the source of well water in that area is really old. It was like, wow, how did they figure this stuff out way back when, before there was the modern technology we have now?
Yeah.
But, you know, there's a lot of fissures, so yeah, it's a problem.
Yeah.
But we know it's limited, so act on that.
Right. So, then the other question I have is, would you propose, then, that we disregard the ORS that talk about either permitted or conditionally-used wineries? Because those are like state laws, as far as I understand.
If the Yamhill County Commissioners have the ability to say, we're not going to follow that, because we have a known set of circumstances in our county, that we don't want to jeopardize residences, we don't want to jeopardize the available water for the existing commercial uses.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you should do that.
Yeah.
I think you should limit it. You have that power. Once you give away that power, it's too late to take it back. Once it's gone too far, there's no taking it back.
Thank you for answering those questions, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No, I don't have, I don't have any. Okay, those are all the requests to speak or provide testimony. Have, did anybody fill one out that didn't?
I filled out a great form. Carla Chambers.
I didn't see it.
I was waiting to ask your question.
Yeah, I didn't see it in here, Carla, let me. I'm sure I just probably missed it, but. Come on forward, Carla.
Yes, my name is Carla Chambers, I live at 23620 Southeast Frankette Drive in Amity. I have a farm there, I'm not too far from the site, I drive by it frequently. I'd like to address a little bit of my history and then a bit of my concerns. So, I've been a grape grower for 29 years. We purchased our first vineyard in Carlton in 1990. I came to that role as a farmer from a public relations job in Eugene. I'd never farmed. I went from media interviews to driving a tractor, you know, seven days a week, and it was a big change for me. Those early years were financially tough, really tough, because our winery didn't pay us for several years. During that time, I managed our 13-acre vineyard full-time, did everything, the pruning, the tine, the leaf pulling, the mowing, the spraying, whatever it takes to get a quality product ready to sell. And through hard work, a frugal lifestyle, and networking and self-education, somehow we were able to keep going. So, Siler and Terilyn, I know what it's like to be a young couple, working very hard for your dream, and I realize this is very important to you, and that this whole process must be very frustrating. So, as an effort to be a good neighbor, I'll volunteer to come to your site next winter, and spend some time with you during pruning season to share my 29 years of knowledge on the possible ways to bring your abandoned vineyard back into production, because I do want to be a good neighbor. Land use planning for vineyards and wineries has always been of interest to me. In the mid-'90s, I contracted work for the Yamhill County Wineries Association, along with Rex Hill, Lang, Sokoblosser, Duck Pond, and others, we worked with the planning department to establish the 15-acre minimum for wineries to be permitted outright. I believed at that time, and I still believe, that a vineyard needs to be of commercial size to be allowed to have a tasting room or a winery. The basic land use problem that got me involved in the Varnum-Vintner's case has to do with the size of the parcel and the water. Unfortunately, the Ola Emi Hills has hundreds of five-acre sites, some were platted over a century ago, before the area became a groundwater-limited area. And our land use planners need to recognize that growth and water use in the area needs to be managed and, yes, limited. If each of these five-acre sites starts a commercial business and starts to use its maximal allowable water, our aquifer will be impacted. It's somewhat amazing to me that the State Water Resources Board does not allow my husband and me, as commercial farmers, to use any more groundwater than a person with a home on five acres. But isn't my property zoned and operating as a farm? I have an 82-acre farm, I grow wine grapes and apples, and it's located at the dead end of Frankette Road. We pass by 13 five-acre sites on our private, non-county road maintained by the neighbors. We're the only farm on that road. In our first year there, we hauled in 227 truckloads of gravel and rock to build our south road. Do you think maybe that impacted the homeowners on our road? You bet it did. We have crews coming and going, and as we converted a Christmas tree farm to our desired crops, we also had helicopters spraying and fertilizing. Noisy for sure. So, how do we handle this? Well, we keep in really close touch with our neighbors with email, texts, we listen carefully and respond to any concerns that they have, because, yes, something comes up each season. Usually, it's a speed issue with the crew and their cars, and we host an annual dinner for everyone. So, Siler and Terilyn, I encourage you to be prepared and plan for this. I also encourage you to come to one of our AVA meetings, I don't think I've seen you there yet. So, two additional things that came up as I was listening to everyone else's testimony is, I think a good additional criteria for the conditionally-use permit would be to ensure their well is able to produce 5,000 gallons a day. It's not just the winery and the tasting room. I believe that 5,000 gallons would also have to cover their home and their landscaping. So, 5,000 gallons split amongst so many uses is not very many, and that's a lot of water. I also think that the issue of precedent to address what Casey was talking about, it's a political precedent and a community expectation precedent that I'm concerned about. If they can have theirs, I could have mine. The problem is, this is in a groundwater-limited area. So, to the Board of Commissioners, I encourage you to deny this application or set stringent conditions on it that address water use and storage. Please consider the impact on the neighbors. In my mind, a five-acre site should not be considered a commercial farm, and it's appropriate to set limits on noisy activities in a neighborhood. That's why we have a conditionally-use process.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Casey.
Carla?
Yes.
There are more efficient ways of using processed water, is that not true?
Um...
So, we don't necessarily need to max them out on our water if, with a more efficient processing? Is it, or, or how do you feel about that?
I guess I don't quite understand your question.
So, are there ways that are more water, less water-intensive?
Oh, certainly in wine making, yeah. The majority of water is actually used for cleaning.
Right.
And I suppose a broom, or, you know, waiting till the end of the day, or maybe using rainwater to wash off your crush pad, instead of using water from your well, those might be options.
Okay, okay.
On our farm, we put in an 80,000-gallon rainwater collection system that we use for irrigating the apples. The grapes don't need irrigation, but the apples do, and so we made that investment since we were in a groundwater-limited area.
Would you recommend or encourage conditions that lay down some ground rules for the types of things that they can use for watering for the processes?
Well, I don't know what their wine-making practices are, so I'd be reluctant to recommend anything in that area, but I do want to see a condition that addresses their well capacity, and if it falls below a certain standard, that they be required to install a storage system for their well water, from their well water.
I believe that there was a well test included in the record, right?
And do you know what that was, how much water?
It was 35 gallons a minute at the five-hour test.
Yes.
I know, I thought the same thing.
You're incredibly lucky.
Yeah.
This was on June 18th.
Yeah.
The well was established in 1974.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, a question for Mr. Friday.
Okay, Commissioner Starrett, Mary, ask your question.
This is a question for Mr. Friday. We're having a lot of discussions about water here. We know that water is pretty much a state issue, and this is something that we should be at AOC, working hard to address specifically, because it's an issue that, I know it impacts where I live, impacts where a lot of people live. We cannot, I just wanted to ask you, if we could just put this issue to bed, so that we're not sitting here talking about issues we have absolutely no jurisdiction over. We are not allowed to put conditions on water, is that correct?
That is correct. So, the suggestion about, you know, if they go below a certain level, that they be required to put in some sort of a storage system, we don't have the authority to do something like that. I do want to note, there are a couple of conditions in here that relate to them demonstrating that they have water, like, condition number three is, prior divisions of building permits, application shall provide evidence of the water right, permit, or long-term service agreement to bring water in from another site, where evidence shall be provided, anything the winery tasting room will not exceed the allowable daily usage for a permitted exempt well under ORS 537.545. But again, that relies on the Water Resources Department's regulations, it's not a regulation that we have. And when we've tried to put regulations on wells in the past, we've been pretty much...
Spanked.
Yeah.
Commissioner Starrett, I was thinking slapped, but spanked is...
Spanked works too, Mary.
Yeah.
Something else I want to note is that, you know, there was previous testimony about fire suppression, and it relates to water.
That's what I was going to ask you about.
And in condition number 10, and this was right from the Amity Rural Fire Department from their response, it says, prior divisions of building permits, the water supply and access driveway will be required to meet Amity Rural Fire District standards. And so, we are trying to, you know, respond to the concerns that we've received on fire suppression and on water, and Friends of Yamhill County had previously asked for a condition like condition number three, and we've placed that on some other wineries, that there were concerns about being in the groundwater limited area, but again, it relies on Water Resources Department's regulations, not on our own.
Yeah.
And then, when, I know that for, at least for some site design reviews, there's been a requirement that there be onsite storage of water, and there's been conversations even here, not when I was Commissioner, about that. What are our bounds there? Is it up to the fire departments?
You know, a lot of discussion was, you know, about precedence, whether these things set precedents, and I really appreciate, you know, Catherine's testimony that, you know, you really can't write a rule that anticipates every outcome.
Yeah.
So, it's on a case-by-case basis, and the whole system, the planning system, is really set to be on a case-by-case basis. And so, I can't rattle off, you know, what the reason was for, you know, application A, B, or C.
Yeah.
We don't have an application A, B, or C in front of us, but we do look at these on a case-by-case basis, and if we think there are reasons to put a condition like that on, we'll put that on. And the one I can recall as doing recently was Abby and Farms, and they asked for us to put that condition on.
Right.
And they offered to have, provide water information to us, and that's beneficial to us from both the water standpoint, but also for septic load standpoint. We don't have great information about that, and so I was very, very happy to give that information promised to us, and some of it they provided. And that was part of the reason that was placed on that.
Good question, Mary.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I think I did find yours, Carla, I did find yours, Carla, just on the wrong stack. And I think that covers, did anybody else turn in one? Okay, hearing none, then that will take us to public agency reports.
Our office has referrals to the public agencies listed in the staff report. The only response we got back was from the Amity Fire Sheet, that say that if the winery is approved, it would be required to meet both commercial driveway and water supply requirements.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
I have a question, Matt, Mr. Chair. One of the things I was a little confused about was they talked about the requirements, or winery should meet requirements for driveway requirements, will also have to meet water requirements later on in the commercial driveway requirement sheet. And I was a little confused about that.
Yeah, I think what you're referring to, whenever, when the fire department signs off a building permit, there's a long form that they, where they inspect the driveway, and there's some check-offs that they do, and so, commercial driveways have a little bit different standards than a private driveway for just like a residence. And so, one of the things that they check off when the fire department does their building permit sign-off is water supply, so that's on that form, I believe.
I think you're right, that's my...
You're right, you're right.
Yeah, so, I think that's what he is saying, is that the form that the fire department uses for their sign-off, that will meet both driveway and water supply on that, and that's how it gets basically...
On the same, okay.
To get approved by the...
Good question.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's the only public agency report, Matt? Okay, then we'll move on to rebuttal by the applicant. This is a chance for the applicants to come forward.
Chairman Olson, could we request a short recess, and then also be supplied with the packet that Miss Carp supplied to you? We are not given a copy of that, and we'd like to understand what's been put into the record. And if we could have, like, maybe a 10-minute recess, so we can review that and then put our rebuttal together, we would appreciate it.
I don't, so let's take 10, we'll give you 10 minutes then.
Okay, sir. And can we get a copy of that testimony?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
I memorized it, so I guess...
You know, you should also be aware, where...
Order now, and we'll start with item number 12, rebuttal by the applicant.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate all of the feedback from our neighbors and community members. I would just like to, I guess, make some comments, just starting off, about the scope of our application. And just say that in trying to be transparent in our application, which we were asked to put as much as we might see happen in the future, I feel that maybe then that has changed or misrepresented our actual focus, which is to be on a property where we're farming, being winemakers. We have a very specific business plan. We've been making wine for five years at Maniche Vineyards, at a facility where we share with other winemakers. And we have come in to make wine and ensure that we can sell wine before we move forward with then a larger property, which we are now, we're able to do. We're currently now producing 600 cases of wine. And as has been stated by many people, this is a small amount. It's not really income-producing yet. And so we are putting in a significant investment, pretty much everything we have, on a teacher's salary. And he's been running a tasting room for five years in Dundee as well. And so while our significant investment may not be the ability to purchase 15 acres of land and install grapes, we are putting our heart and soul into everything we're doing. So with that said, we would like to point out that the vineyard that we purchased was established in 1975 and has gone to disrepair. And I feel that there are many neighbors who are appreciative, that it has been taken on by someone who now wants to take care of it. We've already began the process of clearing it, taking out the blackberries, redoing everything, so that it can be in production soon. It is true that we may find that many need to be replanted, and this is going to be a long farming process. And at the same time, we simply wanted to be able to move our production onto the same site, so that we are able to invest in ourselves, instead of paying rent to make wine somewhere else. We're able to invest in the community and our property and ourselves on that. That being said, we intend to be quite small for some time. It is just the two of us. I'm about to have a baby in June. The proposed tasting room hours were kind of like a, these are big hours. However, when we actually go to open, we may not use that. And so that was just kind of the overall, from, what do we say, 10 to 6?
Give ourselves the opportunity to grow depending on if this grows in the area.
Right. However, as you saw in our discussions with the Friends of Yamhill County, we were completely willing to agree to other tasting room hours, as really those are limited to what we are able to do ourselves. The wine production itself is limited to the size of our proposed winery space, which 4,000 is a stretch. It will probably be closer to, right now, it'll stay around 1,000. And if possible, then to grow larger within that confined space. Otherwise, we would have to submit another proposal. We think that the staff has done a very good job of going over all of the conditional use requirements. When we bought the property, we did our due diligence in making sure that this was something we would be able to apply for, I mean, go through the process of the conditional use. There was, as Sue and Mary had stated, I agreed when we actually were discussing recently about her, and you asked about scaling. So yes, if you take the 15 acres and on average, those 15 people, 13 acres are making around 10,000 cases, it would make sense then that at five acres, we are asking for much less, more around 3,000 case production. And so we do not want all of the same
Maxims.
Maxims given to a full-size winery as permitted. We are
Attempting to scale ourselves in a reasonable manner.
Correct. Under a conditional use. So we're very aware that this is a conditional use. We are smaller. We are in plan to stay small. We have no desire to be Brooks, who at any given time usually has eight employees in their tasting room, as it's just going to be us and probably my mom. We actually want to field all of the questions.
Mary, start with you.
Well, you know, just the whole, the whole size issue here. There was a comment made that you don't deserve all the privileges. And I, I, I think that, you know, it's, it's great when we all aspire to have, you know, bigger is better, and wouldn't it be great if we all had the money right up front to have massive operations? But I just feel that the efforts that you're making with the resources that you have should not be minimized because they don't compare to a bigger, better, more whiz-bang operation with expensive, I mean, you think about a starter home. Nobody winds up in the home typically that they started out with. You build wealth because you own property and because you're able to, to improve upon that and grow your business. And anybody who owns a business knows, when you're starting out, you cannot compare a starter, a starting business with someone who's been in business for a number of years. So I just, I applaud you for, you're making a sacrifice. Apparently, it's a, it's a significant sacrifice. And I just, the whole, the whole having to apologize for the size of your operation, I don't think is, is all that fair.
Casey.
Actually, along those lines, something that stuck out to me, Commissioner, was, oh my gosh, I'm blanking on part of it, but the, the idea that because something can't net a profit in the standard model, that that actually, that's not actually what, I don't believe what we are deciding here. And I can attest that a lot of the folks who were in the room earlier, a lot of larger-scale farmers, my farm is very different, at least scaled, and I do things really on the cheap, and that has allowed me to be profitable. And so I want to encourage creativity in our marketplace and in our agricultural landscape. So I feel like it's along similar lines, that that's stuck in there with me, too.
Okay, yeah, just a couple of things I have to say is, you know, number one is, I really have to hand it to you as a young couple. I remember, I've been here from McMinnville for about 60 years now, 61 years, actually. And I remember when the wine industry first got started, when basically what we had in Yamhill County were some very small niche wineries, you know, and that's what I enjoyed. I liked the small niche wineries. And we've grown so big, sometimes I wonder if we haven't outgrown our, outgrown ourself, if that, if that's even possible, if that's even possible. Couple of issues that were brought up as precedents, and, you know, I think every case is a case-by-case issue. Unfortunately, we can't do anything about water. I mean, that's not, that's not in our regulation. We have to rely on, like, the fire districts determine what kind of access they have, what kind of water storage you have to have for firefighting purposes. I think, question I have, though, is that when you went over that list of additional conditions with Friends of Yamhill County, I think the only one that I saw that really, unless I was wrong, that was some question about was that was, that was a special additional events? That you had requested, what was it, six winemaker dinners and 12 additional events? Or four winemaker dinners and 12 additional events?
Correct. Sorry, it was six, six winemaker dinners or luncheons, and then 12 additional events, which, including then the seven normal open house weekends, I think, added up to 25. So that'd be like two a month. And again, those were just to have the ability to do so in the future. However, also, when it came down to it, we were discussing the verbiage that would be put into place that then would somehow have to be enforced by the county. And there was no language that actually defined what that event is, and therefore made it hard to be, okay, well, whose interpretation of an event are we discussing? And how do we enforce that? And so then I fell back, as you saw in my comments, to that our application in number 13 already states that we're limited by the 25% income that's not from our wine. And at such a small scale, really, we may not even be able to have those feasible events in there. So I then replied to Sid that we thought that number 13 was already self-limiting. And that line was unnecessary to even say anything about how many events.
Okay, it's helpful, yeah.
You know, I do, I do think, I do think Susan Karp did issue, did make me think about something I hadn't thought about for is when you take the, the small parcels like this, and all of a sudden, if I look at that area, I look above Newburgh, you know, to the nor, to the north, how many of those parcels exist where we could be getting into this, you know, setting a precedence? Precedence doesn't concern me as much, because I think everyone is a situation on its, on its own. I hate to see where the point that we limit what the small, especially in the areas of agriculture, we, we limit what the small entrepreneur, the small owner can do. I know I'm dealing with one now I'm looking into that has to do with tax deferral, and it's basically for organic farms. It basically says, if, you know, if you elect to farm a parcel or a field, and you need, because of the farming you're typing, doing, you need that, you work the field, but you leave it lay hollow, hollow for, hollow for two years? Well, technically, that doesn't qualify for the, for the farm deferral, because it says you have to replant that every year. Well, we have a lot of regulations that don't make sense, and I think a lot of these regulations don't make sense either. And I, I don't think we're making it easier for the young entrepreneurs and the young, whether it be alternate farmers, young vintners. We should be making it easier for them to do business and not harder for them to do business. And I'm very glad, as a matter of fact, more than happy to see, I know as a mayor, there are several times that the Friends of Yamhill County weren't City of McMinnville's best friends. But because of the Friends of Yamhill County, who worked with the city very, very much when I was mayor and on the council, I think for our urban growth boundary, we came up with some good thing, and we did cut back on our urban growth boundary adjustment. And so when I see groups like the Friends of Yamhill County working with these kind of land use issues, I really have to, really have to applaud them, too, because I think they do a wonderful job, and they give me a way of thinking of things that I didn't think of it's for, so. Okay, now, the next thing, any more questions? Any, anybody have any questions? Casey? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was asking a question.
We were asking questions of rebuttal, but I thought that James had more, so.
Okay, James.
The one, the one thing I wanted to add, Commissioners, and this comes from the decision with, Hazel Farm was brought up as an example of a small farm, you know, like they want to do. And I don't believe this policy has changed, but in that approval, it said the comprehensive plan policies that are relevant to the proposed use, 1B, Goal 1, Policy A speaks to, quote, "encouraging opportunities for small-scale or intensive agricultural and forestry activities within rural residential zones." So basically, what the, what we're asking for meets comprehensive plan goals as well as everything in the development code. And so I think that's, we're, we're in line with what we, with what you guys are wanting to do in the county.
Okay. Anything else? You guys have anything else? Okay, Casey, now you can ask questions.
Only one.
It'll be a really detailed one with multi-parts, then, I'm sure.
Sure, we'll take that.
So how, what is your sense now of the difference, the gap between what Friends of Yamhill County has proposed and what you are willing to go for? Because what I've heard is a great deal of concern, and this is just county-wide, so Friends of Yamhill County is coming to this and looking at all of the county. And we are talking about your parcel. Is, do you, is there a way for us to, like, cut things down so that the scale is appropriate? Like, all of the scales, the capacity, the events are appropriate to the scale of your operation in a way that we can go forward and not feel terrible about?
So I would say that our, as a staff reported, that our size in what we proposed is self-limiting. And so we really can't make more than 4,000, and that even then is being the most efficient winery in Oregon. And so
For the space.
For the space.
Yeah.
And so that's self-limiting. If you want to put a number there, I would say 3,000 would be acceptable to us. And then on the next point, which we have laid out, their next point was operating hours. We had agreed to the 10 a.m., oh, sorry, we had agreed to be open between the hours of 11 a.m. to 6 p.m. Thursday through Monday, and at other hours by appointment, and we have no issue with that, really.
We don't have an issue with that because when you look at our actual ability to operate as a husband-and-wife team, that's probably a realistic constraint to be placed on us. But we also, as part of our branding, as part of a model, as you spoke to earlier, being a more traditional originating sort of feeling in the, in wine country is, we find by appointment tastings be pretentious. And it's not to say that we don't think that they have a place in the community, and we don't think that they're a way of limiting operation, but there's just a, while we will probably only be open three to five days a week, the, the whole requirement that's stated somewhere that you have appointment-only tastings is, for lack of a better put, a little bit against our branding and our belief that wine is, it should be more
Unpretentious.
Unpretentious.
Drink it, don't overthink it.
Drink it, don't overthink it.
In terms of larger events, we had also agreed to the seven that are listed here, which are all traditional big events.
Big event weekends.
Big event weekends, sorry. We, we had come to some wording of the attendance is limited. As you could also see in the email, we went back and forth, that first it was just a number of people, and then it came down to, well, parking. And we also feel that, yes, all parking should be on, on our property. We do not want anyone parking on the road. I mean, this is, this is not safe, so we totally agree. I don't know that that has to be in the condition of, you know, someone's driving by and taking a picture of how many cars are parked on our property on those days. And I would say that it might be even better to say, well, how is the first weekend going to go? And if there are lots of people, and we walk outside and adjust it and make adjustments for the next year, maybe we can't just be open, maybe we have to have appointments. That that's something that we have the ability to control and prove that we're being good neighbors, and not necessarily just right off the bat having, I know the condition here that there's up to 29 parking spaces, period. No more cars than that, which is a lot of people. And from our perspective, if that many people was there, it would also be hard for us to manage, et cetera. So again, the self-limiting factor comes in. But the wording is really up to you, as the county blessed it, force the wording, so. And then in terms of the other events, like I said, we felt that number 13 limited that scale for that. I do also understand Sid had brought up his concerns that we would be running dinners or as a restaurant, and we will not have a commercial kitchen. If they, Sid had proposed in his letter yesterday of the new wording of
Additional condition.
I think it's here.
Yes, the food service shall conform to a limited-service restaurant, which means, and then it goes on to define that, and we're also agreed to that condition.
Limits our ability to operate or operate under the guise of being a restaurant, which is not our intent.
Correct. So we are fine with that condition added, as we were already going to follow that condition, just naturally, anyway. And then if you wanted to put in an additional 10 spaces of overflow parking, be added to our
Our site plan.
Our site, which we're happy to draw in for you. But again, I mean, really, in between rows or anywhere else on our property, could be overflow parking at any given time. So that's really just whether you want it on the site plan or not. Have we missed any other conditions that you were thinking of us wanting to address?
I feel like there was one that, that Ilse Purus suggested, but I don't think that, I don't think we can actually work on that one right now, so.
So one more question about the, in the past, we've had different situations where one of the conditions or one of the requests has been to have a, a water truck someplace when you're going to have events, if you've got something going on in August and it's a high fire season time. I know there was one particular opportunity, and it was to provide a tanker truck. Mr. Friday, do you remember this? Was this up at the, the Parrot Mountain Farm?
I was going to say, yeah, I believe it was Parrot Mountain, but I don't, right this second, I don't recall the application, but I think it was a Parrot Mountain application that we had referenced to our supply.
Because that, in terms of, of fire suppression, because that is clearly something we all need to be concerned about. It's, it's, it's real. And so when you have no access to fire hydrants and stored water, you want to have something that can at least, you know, and I don't know if that's, that's something that has been considered. I know it wasn't a requirement, but just to have, just to have, when you've got those times of year when it's, you know, and we can tell people all day long, don't smoke, don't whatever, but we know they do, and one errant cigarette can really cause some problems. So I don't know.
I think that's a good point, because it gets us a little bit out of Oregon Water Resources Department land.
It's just, you've got, I mean, you can truck water in, people do it who live in the desert, and that's their water supply. And they truck in water, and
I think initially, Commissioner Starett, we'd like to defer to the, to the, to the Fire Department to find out what they're going to ask us to do. Also, I mean, there's a house and a vineyard on this property. I mean, vineyards aren't known for raging wildfires. I mean, there's not a lot of open land or even a lot of dense trees on the property that could, you know, ignite where people are going to be, that would be able to ignite a raging forest fire on this particular piece of property, in our, in our mind. But we're going to, we would like to defer to the, to the experts. I mean, we're, we're not firefighters, and, and we would like to leave that up to the people who are. And if they recommend that, you know, a storage, some sort of small storage facility has to go in, or that on event weekends, that they would prefer us to have a truck up there, then we would absolutely defer to their expertise and do what the Fire Department requires us to do.
And I think that's a good point, because if you, if, you know, contrast that to the Parrot Mountain Farm, where it's 300 acres of, of grass that has caught fire during events. There's a difference in the, in that. So, yeah, so thanks for that.
Yeah, so I think Condition 10 does say that we'll
Our building permit, our facility, Condition 10 is that we require and meet rural fire district standards.
Sure.
So if there are additional, and we're very open to, and are, obviously don't want to start fires. Fires are bad. I think we can all agree that fires are bad. So we would work with, as Jim mentioned, is the
Maybe have Bruce come out and even say, like, perhaps you should have more outdoor nozzles with whatever we would need in the case of a fire to be able to put it out with, given the flow test of our well.
And also just the size of our facility.
Or maybe, yeah, correct, maybe we need a tank. We're happy to do that with Bruce.
Okay, yeah, and I'm not recommending, or suggesting that you put in underground storage or any kind of, but there, but even if you just, I know Parrot Mountain Farm, they, they had a, a truck up there that they just had there when they needed it. I don't know. Thanks.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, any more questions, Casey?
I think I'm good.
You're good. This is the time that I'll ask if either the, the applicant or the appellant would like to hold the record open, open for three weeks? And if so, I'll read that, what that'll be, no? No reason to get, okay. Then we'll go ahead and move on, and we'll go to staff recommendation.
So a lot of the opposition testimony has been directed at water issues and perceived scale of events and other activities outside tasting room operations that may occur as a result of the application being approved. With regards to water, county really has very little regulation authority, and we've talked about that. But we feel that we have already exercised what authority we do have by placing water-related conditions, showing that they have to have proof, they have a little source of water. As far as events go, in reviewing the application, staff concluded that the small scale of the production facility itself, the small size of the parcel, and then the limiting condition that interacts with those two things, limiting the amount of revenue that can be generated by ancillary retail sales and promotional events were already pretty effective limiting factors on what could occur on the parcel. However, staff does believe some of the additional conditions worked out by the parties would be appropriate to impose on the application. So staff would recommend approval with the original 15 conditions, as well as additional conditions that the board finds appropriate. And what we just handed out to you is basically a write-up of the conditions that were in that email, correspondence back and forth. And we can, I can give you guys a copy as well. You know, there's been a little bit of discussion, and I can read through all the conditions if you'd like, just so that their record is okay.
I have one question on the, on the new recommendation, additional recommendation. On item number three, last sentence, shouldn't it say no on-street parking is allowed and not off-street?
It says off-site.
Off-site.
So off
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And with these, one thing I want to say, you know, the number of production has been thrown around anywhere from 2,000, 4,000, 3,000. I think it would be appropriate for the board to make that decision in its deliberations. That was, that was a number that we put on there, as well as some of these other ones. You've heard the testimony from both sides, and so these are, this is kind of a template for you guys to work off of and, and use in your deliberations.
Okay. Thank, thank you. We, we wanted to read all the original, we don't need to read all the original conditions also.
No, I've seen those.
Okay, we've seen those. Okay, so we've received the staff recommendation. So at that time, we have nothing else. I'll close the public, public hearing, and we will go to deliberation. Public hearing is closed, okay. So let's start, Mary, let's start with you.
Well, I think we, you know, we just, we hear, we hear the same concerns every time, and they are legitimate concerns. And, and I own a lot of those, because I have those concerns about where I live, about water. And here comes somebody, and how's that going to affect my, my well? And, and what about fire because of what they do? And what about noise? I mean, and, and the gravel road and traffic. I, I live that, so I get it. But at, I guess at the, at the end, I, I do think that our planning department does an admirable job of really trying to sort of weigh the, the competing interests of a business, of the state laws that allow for agri, agribusinesses to exist and to coexist with, with, with farms. So I think the additional conditions are appropriate, and I am supportive of that.
Okay, thank you. Casey?
Thank you, all of you Friends of Yamhill County people, for bringing this up. And thank you to the applicants for being willing to hear what they have to say and addressing it. It's super exciting to me to, to see the interactions between Sid and seeing the emails back and forth. So really, thank you for that. I know that Director Friday also really appreciates us, and that's kind of part of his, like, core, is can we, can we cooperate before we have to regulate? Is that accurate?
It's pretty good.
All right. One for one today. So thank you. Thank you very much. I do think that in this particular situation, kind of going off of what Commissioner Starett said, that the scale of this is, I think, to be commended, but that's somewhat of a bias, because I have a small-scale operation. But I think in this particular situation, if we can keep the scale of the events to the scale of your operation, I will feel a lot more comfortable with that. And I think going forward, that's maybe a way to balance the, the state statutes with our concerns in the county, is to keep in mind where we can limit things, so that each particular situation is addressed. Because I know Commissioner Starett wants us to look at each particular situation. Is that accurate? I feel like it's kind of accurate.
You're right on. You're spot on, Commissioner.
I'm two for two.
Two for two.
Okay.
You know, I really, again, I appreciate the applicants, especially since they're putting a labor of love in, labor of love in this. It's evidently, yeah, everybody likes to make money, but this isn't the reason they're really doing it. It's just a labor of love. And to make a good, decent-wage earning for a family. The one thing I do have, I do have a question for Ken. If they would want to, if we kept the additional recommendations at, the applicant said 3,000 cases, and we have 2,000 cases here, can they come in for, just in a, they can file a change in this conditional use to go to 3,000?
It's expensive, though. I mean, the condition use permit is around $2,400, and so, but yeah, they can do that. I, I guess I would shy more towards the 3,000, just because we've talked between, and were between 2,000 or 4,000, and they've suggested 3,000. It's kind of a, based on the acreage, 3,000 seems to be more reasonable. But it's up to the law.
That's why I asked that question, because I was leaning more towards the 3,000 myself.
And Ken, what did you mean about based upon acreage?
Well, as they were testifying that, you know, you're going to get, you know, a certain amount of wine based on 15 acres. If you have, you know, five acres, a parcel, then since you have a proportional amount of that. And he was testifying that it should be more like 3,000 cases of wine. And so that's, that didn't seem to be an unreasonable way to look at it.
Okay. That's, I just think that's, I'm, I'm hesitant to go along with that, simply because I feel like each particular situation is so unique. I mean, as you know, yields are different between different parcels. are different between different parcels.
They can only get about 700 cases.
From that particular
Are we allowing additional testimony?
No, I don't think we are.
No, so we're only in deliberation right now, Casey.
Right. So I'm, I'm hesitant to increase, because I don't see, as there was a comment about precedent, I'm worried that then we'll have to look, look at each one.
And I was not trying to
I didn't think you were, but I wanted to, like, put the fire tanker and the, the water tanker in that particular one. Okay.
Okay. We have any more conversation? I think the thing in front of us right now is I'll, let me get my sheet out here. So we've had our, we've closed the hearing, we've had our deliberations, and we have the, what we have to do is uphold the appeal or, or not uphold the appeal. So I will take a recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I would move we deny the appeal and uphold the application.
Okay, so we have a recommendation by Commissioner Starett that we deny the appeal and uphold the application of C-38-18 and SDR-44-18. And that's for appeal of Planning Director's approval of conditional use and site design review for the construction of winery, wine, a winery tasting room and accessory uses. And the applicant was Siler Barnum. So that being said, we do have a motion to deny
Mr. Chair, could I ask for a clarification on whether that, your motion includes the additional recommended conditions?
Excuse me, yes. I'll amend my motion to, I move that we deny the appeal, approve the application with the recommended additional conditions.
Okay, thank you. So we have that motion, we have that clarification. So I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying, and this is to actually deny the appeal. Everybody signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, and to
Well, aye, yeah.
Those are the conditions, yeah.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Any opposed, hearing none? Let it, so, let it show that the community, the commission unanimously decided with the original recommendations and the additional recommendations to deny the appeal of Docut C-38-18 and SDR-44-18. Mr. Legal, please.
If I might ask for till April 18th for the written findings and conditions to be presented to you, three weeks from today.
So let's show, so April 18th has been set for the final recommendations coming before us. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going late in the afternoon. Anybody have any particular announcements or anything?
Mr. Chair, at the, at the risk of, I will make this very short, because I know that time is, is, yesterday, I just wanted to say, testified on House Bill 3383, which is the bill, as you know, I asked Representative Noble to bring, which gives the counties more oversight in child welfare. This came on the heels of news yesterday that DHS, local DHS caseworkers had been put on leave with the allegations that they were having sex in a hotel room with kids that were not supposed to even be housed in hotel rooms anymore. This is, we've got administrative leave for two caseworkers and our local DHS manager here in Yamhill County. That shows us every need for having more county oversight. And also that child, that the DHS has been not forthcoming in information on more deaths of foster kids in custody. That being said, the testimony included a lot of opposition, not only from DHS management, but also from the SEI union, which is concerned about losing, unions losing their jobs, which we tried to tell them was not part of this, this plan. So my guess at this point is that, is that the efforts that we are making in this county to have more oversight on such egregious and horrifying stories that came out yesterday is going to be a gut and stuffed bill, which will bear little resemblance to what we had all hoped it would be. So FYI, it is disappointing, but it will go to ways and means, it will get another shot, and hopefully, it won't be watered down too much.
Thank you very much for working on that, Commissioner.
Where was the town halls going, or the listening sessions?
Unfortunately, our consultants have canceled two of them, which made it difficult to tell people out in the community that their meetings were canceled. And you can't call back
No.
A Facebook invitation. So I'm disappointed in our consultants in that regard for not, you know, these meetings are important. And also, I think there's a lot of restriction on foster parents being able to tell their stories at these meetings. So I am disappointed.
Yeah, okay. I didn't, I hadn't heard that.
Okay, Casey, anything short?
You have more, though, right? I feel like there were three.
If the consultant
There's one on April 4th in McMinnville at Chamecada.
Okay.
And there's one coming up in Carlton. And I hope they don't get canceled either, because there are a lot of people who have a lot to say. And the one in Carlton is, I believe, going to be, well, the one in Newburgh is on April 23rd. And that's at Providence Hospital. And the one in McMinnville is on April 4th at Chamecada.
Okay.
That's what I have so far.
Okay, thanks.
Well, hopefully, we'll continue to make good progress on that, because I agree with you, Commissioner. I think it's probably going to be a gut and scut and stuff, you know, which is, we need more control over that at the county, county level, where the kids and the foster families can really get support. So
Thank you.
I agree. Casey, anything quickly?
I have so many things, but not quickly.
Okay, not quickly. At length of the day, the only I'll have to say is I'd like to thank staff, especially, she's gone now, but Carrie and Ken for working with Sedcor and Abashaw on our Economic Development Advisory Committee and where we're moving. I think this is something that some of us for the last few years have had an idea that we wanted to do and move it. So we really, people that want to, it takes us out of the decision, a lot out of the decision-making process, and puts, puts it back into those people that know economic development. So I appreciate everybody's support on that. And that being said, if we don't have anything else.
Thank you, everybody.